For now, we're all set.
Great. Okay, good morning, everyone. We bring the Montgomery County Planning Commission Monthly Board Meeting for September thirteenth to order. Uh, I know we showed that we have a forum in the room. And we're currently missing three board members. Got a text from Bob. Not sure about Jill and Joe, but we don't have anybody online, right?
No.
Okay, so we do a forum, so we'll move forward with that meeting. Are there any more comments before we get started with the agenda? More comments?
Welcome back, everyone.
Yes, I informed Steve I had to leave a little early today. I apologize to the board that just.
All right, we're gonna try to finish by eleven.
Thank you.
Um, with that, um, we have first order of businesses to approve the minutes. So I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for our regular monthly board meetings in July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three is our motion. So we remove this as a second.
Second.
Any comments or corrections on the board meeting minutes for the twelfth of July? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving? Hi, being opposed? Any public comment? Or staff comment? Anybody in the room? Anybody online? Then we'll move on to our first, uh, order of business, which is the Lower Marion School District contracts. And we'll call on Ann. How you doing, Ann?
I'm a frequent flyer at today's meeting. Um, okay. Alright, so, um, it's the time of year for new school district enrollment projection contracts. Um, we have another one in the works, but this is for Lower Marion School District. Um, this is another update. I think it is our sixth or seventh. We did one last year, but they are looking to update their projections as I believe their kindergarten enrollment continues to increase and they are still considering possibility of switching from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten and are looking for updated projections to help with their own, you know, capacity planning. Uh, this would be a contract for a total cost of nine thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars with the typical seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent split, so a total of school district funds of seven thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars. The contract will begin on number twenty-first and be wrapped up right around. Thanks.
So before we get any questions, we'll, we'll, uh, get a motion on the resolution in front of us before. If we have MCPC Resolution twenty-three dash nine point one, short-term contract resolution September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three for school district contracts. Seven six five eight, Lower Marion School District. Length of contract is from September twenty-first to, of twenty twenty-three to December first, twenty twenty-three. Total cost is nine thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. Uh, seventy-five percent of that from the school district and twenty-five percent is taken up by the county. Do I have a motion to approve our resolution?
I'm in.
So moved or seconded? Seconded. Any comments or questions for Ann on this resolution?
Just a quick question. I think it's interesting, and I think it'll be interesting to find out with this increase in kindergarten, whether it's an increase in new families in the community or people are looking to go to public education for their preschool. And I think that'll help us have some idea as we move into our comprehensive plan, maybe for other communities and what is happening with the demographics.
Yeah.
Again, do we know how the past projections have been compared to actual?
I have not seen this year's enrollment numbers yet. Um, so I don't know how last year's projection lines up with this year's actual student population. Um, the drop in public school enrollment during COVID nineteen really has thrown off our previous numbers and it's, at this point, I think, pretty much back to normal, but it's hard to know if there are still families that intend to re-enroll their, their kids in public school or not. Like we, if you look at our, our past year's projections, we're not at that level again, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
You got other questions for Ann? All those in favor of approving the resolution, say hi.
I would.
Any opposed? Great, thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
But next we have DVR PC contracts and then call on Matt and give it through that. These are our yearly gathering DVR PC contracts.
Yes, correct. Morning Board, uh, this is an annual action that you take. For you is a, um, Resolution twenty-three dash nine point two. Um, that would authorize the county and the planning commission enter into a contract with, um, DVRC. So we can receive pass-through transportation and GIS money. So as Steve said, this happens every year. It's been a couple of decades yearly where DVRC has passed money back to us. Essentially, the money is used to pay for the transportation section team and the GIS team a little bit. Um, and what it does essentially is it, it, it gives the counties, each county gets the same type of money at different levels. Um, but essentially it helps to subsidize county involvement in regional transportation planning. So when my team on transportation side goes down to, uh, engage in meetings on the long-range plan or the tip update or the congestion mitigation process, um, you know, that pays for our staff time to exist to be part of that. So what's different from last year is that the number actually went up a little bit. This year, we're looking at a total of two hundred sixty thousand one hundred dollars. If you have the resolution in front of you, there's three lines, three numbers. Um, one is, uh, SRHPP, which is basically the highway side. The other is TSP, which is basically the transit side. And then, of course, GIS is self-explanatory. And, uh, those three numbers total two hundred sixty thousand one hundred. The Supportive Regional Highway Planning Program, SRHPP, went up by fifteen thousand. It's now a hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, the trans support program has not changed. We get the same amount, uh, in this fiscal year, seventy-seven thousand four hundred. Then the same with the GIS. That has not changed. Uh, our in-kind. Went up by fifteen thousand. Last year was one hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred.
Is there work planned different? Um, do we have newer projects or different projects? Or is it just the expectation that there's more work to be done?
It's just the generous largess from DVR PC. So.
You know, I did the math and that fifteen thousand dollars plus the one forty-one seven does come out to one.
I know. My, 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 my kids in their, uh, middle school and high school math.
I never thought of this, Stephen. I never thought about that.
My math school was seven minutes in.
So, uh, yeah, I mean, not to get too far deep into the, the baseball, but, uh, basically DVR PC gets money directly from the federal government to do what they do and to exist. They're called PL funds. And so for years, all three of these amounts of money came from their PL funds. And over the years, they've pulled different things out of that pass-through and, and they shifted it to the tip. And so a couple of years, they did that with the SRHPP. So it's easy for DVR PC to increase that because it comes out of the tip. It doesn't come out of their bottom line. Um, so that's one reason why it, it went up is they committed to increasing that to the counties. Um, the TSP and the GIS still come out of the PL, and that's one reason why it has not gone up.
There's no cost of living, you know, but this helps us, you know, deal with all of our costs that are.
It, it, it does. Basically, it just means that, you know, transportation staff, our salaries are not borne as heavily by the county. This offsets them.
Right.
Same with the GIS. So that's the action before you, um, is to, uh, your, have you guys consider passing this resolution? Allow us to enter into these contracts, take it up to the commissioners next week for their formal approval. And then we can execute these documents and start getting a reimbursement for the fiscal year that runs from July that was just two months ago to next June. DVR PC is on that July to June fiscal year, whereas the county is not.
So, uh, before us, we have MCPC Resolution twenty-three dash nine point two, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Federal Highway Transit and GIS Pass Through Funds Resolution of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, as per the information before us in your agenda and has been explained by Matt, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are any additional comments or questions on this resolution?
No. How do they, there's only counties in the area that get the same amount of money?
They do not, no.
So how is that?
I really do not know. I, 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 I. Well, you know, I mean, I, 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 I've, I've looked at that over the years and, and I feel like maybe at one point someone mentioned it, but I, I don't recall why. So we get the second most. Um, Philly gets about a hundred thousand more than we do. Chester County gets a little bit less than us. Um, this is at least on the SRHPP side. Uh, the TSP is much closer in number. SRHPP varies widely, and that's where the real differences overall come. But Philly gets like two fifty, you know, we get, you know, roughly one fifty. Chester gets just a little bit less and then Delaware and Bucks get significantly less. And it may go back to population numbers thirty-some years ago. That's most likely how those things are, are figured out. But it all goes back years.
Any other questions from out on this resolution? Thank you. All those favor? Hi, any opposed? Great, thank you. Next up is we'll go into our conversation, continuing our conversation on Monco twenty-fifth background trend reports. Um, and I think we are starting with government.
Government.
Community facilities with Ann.
Right, so Ann and Patty and I are going to do this little section here. Um, you all saw.
Can we pick somebody else besides Ann?
I tried, but. I'm proud of her for somebody.
You have been shot rather by cannon.
Yeah.
Ann, if he's picking on you, it's not chicken or me. Very grateful for you here.
So we've been working on these ten, uh, background trends, existing conditions, reports. Um, we've done the data collection and analysis, sort of understanding of what the issues are. You have in front of you three of the draft documents. They were graphically designed by Anastasia and they're beautiful. Um, they're, they're not quite a hundred percent final, and we welcome your feedback. And then there are seven more of those uh, four-page documents that are in the works, various stages of not quite as complete as this one, these ones. Um, and right, so this.
Are those gonna, the other ones that you're doing, are those gonna relate to the stuff that we discussed back before?
Right, like, uh, yes. Uh, so these ten things will work place. Um, Monco today, these are going to be sort of more nimble, more focused on the current issues in these ten topics. Um, you've heard already presentations on eight of them. And we have the last two today. With each of these ten topics, there's going to be one of these corresponding documents like you just got. There's also going to be, um, you know what they look like because you're seeing one in front of you. There's also going to be an online map and resource center that will have additional materials for each of them. It'll have some more maps that are not in the four-page document and those part of the benefit of putting them online is that we can update them, uh, as data may change or information may change. Oh, and you have a copy for Obed?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, um, and, uh, also we, we do envision a lot of people will be viewing these online, even though we are printing a copy of each of the, I mean, we'll have print versions of each of the ten documents. But you can see in the footer on the last page, there's a link that will go to that, this online map and resource center where people can get access to more maps. And in this, on this page, there will be also the PDF, the four-page PDF, so. Um, that's what's going on with these ten topics. Oh, right, this page, this exists now online and it has a link to our public survey, which is still out and available. And, um, has some information about the comp plan and a video of an initial kickoff informational meeting. We do plan to supplement this with additional interactive materials, uh, for people to give feedback and other stuff, so we're working on that as well. And now Ann is going to give you the first presentation.
Hi, okay, thanks. Steve, I'm back.
Morning, Ann.
Morning.
It's like you never left.
We missed you.
So, uh, I, my presentation's a little bit different in that I don't really have trends about government facilities to talk about. But this was information that we included in our last comprehensive plan and we didn't want to lose it. Um, so I have updated it for Monco twenty-fifty and it will be, like Chloe said, one of the uh, four-page companion pieces. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about, um, the role that our various levels of government play in terms of how we interact with these various agencies, the governmental facilities that are here in the county. And then a little bit about the community facilities that are here and, and how we interact. And how they operate. So first off, we've got the federal and state governments. Um, we have, uh, some interaction with the federal government in that they, um, kindly provide funds to us. They provide funds to DVRC, who apparently, um, but you know, they, they provide funds through HUD or, uh, through um, the state DOT that eventually make their way down to us. Uh, the decisions on how to spend those monies take place either at a state or, um, regional level. Um, we have a lot more interaction with the work that we do here at the Planning Commission through the state government, obviously through the municipality's planning code. But also through the regulations that come through, uh, DEP or PENDAT, um, and, and the the staff that are here in the, the county that we interact with just professionally. Um, the federal offices are primarily in Philadelphia, but we do have, as you see here, and I'll get into this more in a minute, you know, we have the DEP regional office here in Norristown down the street, and we have a PENDAT District Six offices in King of Prussia. Um, I will skip talking about the county government because you should all be experts in that by now. But we do have sixty-two municipalities, each with their own municipal government. Uh, and, and they interact with the work that we do here at the Planning Commission a lot in that they are the entities that adopt zoning and subdivision codes, they approve land developments at a local level, control and maintain local roads, impose impact fees and, and, you know, generally provide us with a lot of our day-to-day work. So, um, that's an important thing and a good thing. Uh, they also provide parks and emergency services and community facilities that, uh, make up an important part of our, our landscape. Other governments, we have, there's a lot. When you start to really think about it, there's a lot here in the county. Um, in terms of government facilities on the left is, um, the, the former Willow Grove Naval Air Base, um, which still has, um, some administrative offices, but it won't be the, the airport that it used to be. Uh, and on the right, we have the brand-new county corner facilities. Um, so the county does own and operate several buildings here in the county, uh, including the coroner's facility. Um, that is adjacent to the, the county, uh, prison, I believe. Uh, where we have approximately a thousand inmates in Lower Providence Township. We also have public safety offices that are there. We have a, um, emergency services training facility in Plymouth Township. We have obviously the, the county seat here uh, with, uh, a big construction project across the street from this building that will be a, um, and, and I guess, an annex to the courthouse and the facilities that are there. Um, we also have, um, state and federal facilities that are here. I would say the most common federal facility that we have here in the county are post offices. We've got lots of those. Uh, but we also have, uh, other facilities with the USDA Research Facility in Springfield Township. Uh, the Air National Guard Base that I just mentioned, and we have state facilities as well. Um, new to the list of state facilities is the State Correctional Institution at Phoenix that replaced Bredaford in twenty eighteen. Uh, as well as the other offices they already mentioned, the DEP facility, um, and PENDAT. And other, you know, park offices and that sort of thing. In terms of community facilities, they are really varied. Uh, I mentioned emergency services in that we have training facilities, um, here that the county operates, but we have police, fire, and ambulance services throughout the county that provide emergency services for people. Most of our police service is, um, done at a municipal level. We do have some municipalities that don't have their own police force and contract with the state police to provide services out of their barracks and skip back. Uh, our fire services are primarily volunteers. Um, most municipal level fire companies uh, are, are volunteer-led, but some do have paid professional staff. Um, and again, we have the county's fire academy. Our ambulance services are state-licensed nonprofits. Um, they are not really connected to our municipalities, but they do operate at a fairly local level. In terms of schools and school districts, in the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year, you'd think I would know these statistics better, given what it was just up here talking about, but I don't. Uh, we have twenty-two school districts in the county, some which have boundaries that are outside of the county, uh, especially as we get towards the western edge of, of the county, uh, since Philadelphia School District is just for Philadelphia. Um, we have twenty-two school districts with about one hundred twenty thousand students. We also have a, a wide variety of private schools here in the county, which educate about seventeen and a half percent of all paid to twelve students in the county. Uh, that number has dropped over the years for a variety of reasons, um, finances included. Uh, we also have, uh, twenty-one colleges and universities here. Um, we have maps of all of these things that you will see in that online map hub that Chloe was sharing with you. Um, but, you know, including, we also have the community college with two different campuses, uh, one in Blue Bell, one in Cox Town. And the community college educates about thirteen thousand students, which is not too shabby. We have a wide variety of libraries here in the county. There are thirty-five of them, I believe, and about forty-six percent of the county's population has a library card. So I guess there is room for improvement there. We've got, um, the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library, which is a physical building, is, uh, about to be renovated. But that is really an umbrella organization that encompasses, uh, a for, it's a formal group of member libraries that are scattered throughout the county. They also facilitate interlibrary loans for, um, the entire countywide library system. Uh, so we have, we do also have some municipal-level libraries. We've got the law library in the courthouse, as well as, um, libraries at, at all of those colleges and universities. Wow, so there are lots of resources and they're more than just places for books and periodicals. They really do provide an, an important community service for our municipalities. Uh, last but not least, we've got arts and culture, uh, which is, uh, an important part of the county. And I think it really makes Montgomery County unique. Obviously, Philadelphia is the big regional draw for arts and culture. Uh, but we have lots of really unique things here to, to check out when you're not, um, hanging out here at the Planning Commission. You've got places like the Berman Art Museum on Sinus College's campus. That's on the right. We've got arts and culture festivals. Um, we've got a zoo. And we've got really quirky, unique places too, um, like, um, uh, places where people show off their cars or airplanes. Uh, we've got the Stu Gym if, uh, physical harmony is your name, so all sorts of things like that. Uh, and with that, I am going to turn things over to Chloe and Patty to talk about our existing ones.
Are there any questions for Ann on government facilities?
How many colleges do you mention? Twenty-one?
Uh, twenty-one, I believe. We lost a, um, a seminary in Hatfield, which so it was, it's one less than I think it is previously.
That's what colleges?
Yes, colleges, yeah.
You mentioned also libraries. How many libraries?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And, and most of them are municipal libraries?
Yes, not all municipalities have, right, some municipalities have several, some none, um, and some, you know, feed into this greater.
Branches libraries of Montgomery County.
Yeah.
Some of them started out as satellites and then became branches. I don't know where it is now, but they rely on the county service.
Right.
And Long Museum of Art. But it's not.
No county museum of art, no.
And do I understand from Chloe that for each one of these, there'll be a four-page, like, briefer?
That's correct, yes. Those are just the ones, the ones that you have are the ones that are in good enough shape to share with you. The others are still in the process of being revised or typed up or, yeah.
Do, do we have public venues for art and miniature concerts?
We do. Um, yeah, there's the Cheswick Theater in Adamant, which is probably the, the biggest place. Um, but we also have venues at the Community College in Blue Bell. They have, I mean, you know, galleries and a place for public events.
Montgomery, this Montgomery Theater in Sartor.
We have a lot of playhouses.
Yeah.
A lot of playhouses, um.
Well, well, the, but, but those are nonprofits now. I am talking about places where people can, the same, can do concerts, public spaces. In bars.
Yes, I don't know if it's anything county-related, but I think there's several municipalities that have facilities that will.
Green Lane Park has a concert, an outdoor concert venue. Um, but no indoor public art space that is technically county-owned.
Uh, yeah, and, uh, this may be a little bit premature, but the information, just what you have explained, uh, lets everyone know that, that Montgomery County is just not a place. It's, it's, it's a multitude of various colleges, universities, blah, blah, blah. Is there, is this going to be, when this is wrapped up, is this going to be a big announcement, get to the papers, so that the, the common person knows to go to the website? To see what this is all about?
Uh, yeah, so like this is just the first, the first step. We still have the actual policy setting to do, so we will do more outreach and more engagement, I believe, to, to give people the opportunity to, to weigh in on this, but we, we want to make sure that we have all of this available to people to use. So that's, that's the purpose of having these shorter documents and, and shifting things to be available online all the time.
Okay, thank you. So.
Yeah, just where would, uh, no, it's not municipal, but where would like the healthcare, like hospitals and things like that, where would they fall into an accountability?
Where's what?
Hospital.
So that will be covered in the next presentation a little bit. But we also have a, we'll have a four-page or.
That's how we did.
And there is a map of hospitals in that.
Okay.
I mean, but if you're asking like, who owns them and operates them, they're mostly nonprofit owned, you know, they're not county-owned. The county doesn't own any hospitals, and I don't think there are any municipalities that have like a municipal rented hospital.
Yeah, that's kind of like what I was asking, because I know they kind of.
In terms of government, yeah.
We've got, um, the Lansdale Hospital, the, the Adamant Lansdowne Hospital, that is no longer nonprofit. I mean, any of them, are any of them nonprofit anymore? Ha, Tower Health owns Cox Town. And then it's all University of Pennsylvania and then.
Well, I mean, University of Pennsylvania is, uh,
And I, I think just on that, I mean, I think we have to make a distinction. Most hospitals in county are still nonprofit. There are some for-profit, like, um, uh, suburban, uh, Mercy Suburban, uh, joined a for-profit, uh, maybe ten years ago. But most are, most are still nonprofits. They're owned by healthcare chains.
Yeah.
Healthcare systems. And those healthcare systems like Jefferson, are technically nonprofit.
You know, not exactly. I mean, they're not for-profit. So going through this and some of the questions have been asked. Is there, is there an consensus and, or is there an idea in staff as to in what conversations would be had in developing a comprehensive plan related to these facility, governmental facilities? Because there's just, I know you talked about the physical layout of what's in the county and everything, but are there deficits? Are there gaps in how some of these governmental facilities, whether they be arts and science or to actual just, you know, municipal buildings, um, service the community, the county, the county residents? Is there, is there something that you've been discussing that would lead some of the discussions in the comp plan, or is this really just an informational part of this? I, I mean, I know this is the informational part of this process, but is it just, is this going to continue to just be an informational part of the comp plan?
I think that, I mean, maybe Chloe has a different answer, but to me, these, these were done and, and this exercise and gathering and updating information was done to, to inform the next. To inform the next stage of the process, so we haven't been having these conversations yet, but I do think that. When we wrap these up and move on to. Gathering the advisory committee that we've been discussing with you and 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 sitting down, thinking about what are the themes, what has people's feedback been? We haven't analyzed the results of the survey that has been ongoing. Um, that's all going to combine together to to come up with the themes for the plan going forward, the. Goals that we want to work toward, um, and we we are trying to keep in mind that this is supposed to be a a plan for more than just the planning commission, so. How do we engage the the rest of the county departments in in trying to figure out what the. The deficits are and how we can operationalize what we do have influence over to to make improvements in the future.
Uh, we we talked in, in that in this presentation, we've talked about some of the general. Directions and some of the conversations might take place during the comprehensive planning process, which will happen next. I guess I'm I'm looking at this and I'm trying to figure out. Maps, some, I have some notions in my own head about where I think it will be, but I just ended up there with some conversations among staff. How do you even put it together this, just like any other, other topics I've been going through over the last few months, if there hasn't been any conversation about. Yeah, no bed brought up without art museums or performing arts places, so that's something that might be aspirational to through to twenty fifty that. Is improved upon, is there? You know, like Plymouth Township has that, you know, beautiful community center and Montgomery Township has one also, is that? You know, regionalizing community centers like that where multiple, you know, multiple disciplines could kind of carry on them, is that something that the county? Would would want to entertain in the comprehensive plan, and some of this could be rhetorical, I'm not actually, but you know, I don't know.
I have not been a part of that conversation, so.
Planners, so it's hard for us not to look into the future, start thinking about this, and as we've done these background reports, we had to actually. Kept reminding ourselves that we're talking about background information right now. We're not thinking, oh, this is our new thing, or this is, we got. It's hard not to do that, because again, we like to, we're planners, so we've had those conversations, we've tried to bring them in. Just try to stay focused on what these background pieces are and put those kind of in what we call hearting on and think about those when.
And, yeah, it's.
But the process is, I mean, the process is not going to be a free for all. You're gonna, you're gonna put together an advisory board, there's gonna be conversations, everything's changed, and whoever's gonna be. You know, moderating for that, for lack of a better term, those conversations is gonna. Lead it in some direction, not necessarily pinpointed in a specific direction, but. Gonna lead it in some, in down some road, and I know that the twenty thirty five plan is going to be somewhat a template moving into twenty fifty, one fifty. But there are, there has, there's some ideas, there's going to be some. Broad brush ideas that are gonna lead the conversation. You're not just gonna walk into a room and. They get into a free for all and say, hey, what does everybody think, what do they want to do? So that's why, that's why I'm asking, and 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 I get it, like, I know that that may have not.
You you just, we're not there yet.
Okay.
I think in the past, as I remember, and I think I've been involved with two comp plans before, we did extensive, heavy, lifted, big. You know, looking backwards, and it was, I think it was a con- a conscious effort this time not to do the where we are, because I still have them, I think. Those big, because people don't look at them, you know. Where we've been in the past, to get us to where we are now, I think these basically are overviews of where we are now. Not the whole process of how we got.
No, I know that. I I I understand what you, I never understand the first. I will be ahead to the next step.
I think this will be.
Getting from the transition between this information and. The process that starts formulating some of the ideas that are going to be championed in the comprehensive plan.
But I can see, Stephen, I can see these being very helpful to people who are on the committee, might not be. Uh, municipal officials, they're as focused on the county as people in this room might have been. So you could take these, what, seven, seven?
That would be ten altogether.
Ten or ten, and this can be your quick background learning on where John asked to look at these. As you can, so you can participate in that conversation where we're going.
Right, I get that. I understand that completely.
Okay.
That's not. I, and and the information is great, and the stuff that's been presented, the information has been helpful, and I think it would be extremely helpful to. Especially people that are walking into this cold, like.
Right.
Not like most of the people sitting in this room. My question, my question really is that transition between the information you're giving us. And that you've been working on and the conversations that are going to start when. The process starts to de- define what those ideas are going to be championed in a comprehensive plan.
And so I I was all.
To Patty's point is, you guys are planners, and I can imagine you guys are sitting around and just. Pulling data and saying, we're just gonna stop there and we're gonna put blinders on and not think about anything else.
No, I mean.
So I just think, that that's all. I think that there was conversation amongst, they have one, you know. What is the role in the, to um, promote or improve upon in governmental facilities?
I mean, it's, it's truly, it is a conversation that. Counties, right, we're always having, but we haven't officially had the Monaco twenty fifty conversation, but like the recreational question, for example. We've had past comments about the lack of a shiny new recreational facility in Norristown, for example. Um, and there is art money that the county has set aside to to do some sort of. Larger recreational facility here in Norristown. I don't know. Where that conversation sits at the moment. I know that there have been some public meetings. I know that there is the police athletically. Uh, I know there's no YMCA here, but. You know, whether that becomes a county facility or it becomes a Norristown owned facility, I don't know, that it's.
Right.
But it's, you know, it's a complex question of. Who, whose ownership it is, but but I do think that. These are conversations we're always having, we just haven't had it under the auspices of Monaco twenty fifty yet.
No, I just, are you talking now about how we develop the process? Going forward with the comprehensive plan and whether there should be some structure prior to getting to the committee. Sitting down, is that your question?
No, I think there's an opportunity at this agenda item that. You're giving us information, which is, as I said, helpful. But is it also worth having just a brief conversation, turning to not a brief conversation, because I'm talking a lot? But yeah, have a brief conversation about what it is that we want to take from that information and how do we want to? Uh, what what are some of the very broad brush ideas or thoughts in people's minds? Whether it be staff or planning commission board members, what are, what are the ideas that we have that? We would want to explore that's related to these governmental facilities. And some of them are broad brush, like I could bring up one that's bouncing around my head. I've already alluded to it, and you've just talked about it, community, community, uh. Facilities similar to like Plymouth Township and I go back to Montgomery Township where they have these large facilities and, you know, they're. They've a lot, but it goes, you know, it 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 takes a couple of boxes, you know. It, if you have a community facility like that, that's, you know, owned or somehow run or. By a municipality or by or supported by the county or something like that, does it help with obesity? Does it help with people having a place? Because right now, I mean, you have to go, you know, especially in the eastern part of the county, I know. You have to join a health club. I mean, there's really are no facilities that are, you know, community run in. Shelton Ham, I can't, Abington, Jenkins Town, all those, I mean, you have to get into. You have to get a little bit further into the center of the county to pick up any of those.
Your blind scenes?
We have definitely, there's a Wool Grove YMCA, there used to be Abington and moved out to Wool Grove, but they've actually lost a lot of people from the. Abington, Shelton Ham area that used to go to, because now it's a little further out. I mean, I'm sure they've picked up people closer in Bucks County as they get closer there, but you know, the the their demographics, I think, have changed. Um, and so, you know, just. That's the one thing I start to think about is, you know, there's libraries, like Shelton Ham, Shelton Ham is currently in the process of looking at. I think, I would have five or six libraries, I I don't know the exact number, but they have a bunch of branches that are looking to consolidate all their libraries. Into one facility, um, you know, and then some communities don't have any libraries, so is there, uh. Is is there something that we want to explore about? You know, um, taking bulks of communities similar to maybe like school districts. Where we, you know, there's there's a community library that services multiple municipalities. And in those communities and in those libraries, do those libraries have meeting spaces? Do they have performing arts spaces? Do they have exhibit spaces? That could also be utilized for multiple purposes, so those are the kind of things that are bouncing around there, and that's that really where the conversation is. That that I'm.
I would be happy to have a more targeted conversation on this, um. But not today, because I don't want to get in the way of Patty and Chloe.
And and what I will say is, the art, as you're thinking about whether, how the, it won't be a free for all, because again, once we digested these background documents. Then then the next step is to maybe do that, sort of what we've done in the last one was a charrette, where we kind of pull together, what did, what were the trends, we we identified the trends. Let's see who you represent your trend document and then talk about what then, so that we have a structure going into with those meetings. We're not gonna just open it up.
We're not gonna go into that advisory committee meeting with a blank slate.
Right, exactly.
We're gonna have.
I don't think you are, but I was.
We'll have, yeah, we will have.
Where you were, you know.
We will, and I would like to think that by then we will have the beginnings and some ideas, a synopsis of the community feedback we've had, so far. Um, which is not quite there yet.
Uh, I I just do, I don't want to expand too much, but I think this is very important for a few reasons. There are. A community efforts that are act- actually trying to close those gaps. And 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 if those community efforts can partner with the county. It can really propel many of these solutions and many of these projections still. For example, and I will just speak from my experience. At this moment, as a character, we are, we want to open another gallery for the community. While we are trying to find the money for that. We want another gallery where the people, when the young people, elderly, every ethnicity. Can actually exhibit. We have the space now, and we are just trying to find the money to actually make the, 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 the gallery. Uh, in the same place, we have a back, a back, um. A, a, um, a back patio, where we want to make a venue for the young people to perform, to present. To project movies. And that is what we are doing as a community, because we don't find the venues, then we create the venues. But these efforts can partner with with the county. And come finally, and if I, uh, in the county partner, it can propel many things. And the same question about the community center, we wanted to have the money to build a community center. For exercise, for this, for that, et cetera, therefore I'm just saying that there are pockets in the community. That if I find the right partner, or partners, we can really propel many of these projections.
Any other comments? Has has your message been? Presented to the general public saying, hey, we have this venue, hey, we have this area for a gallery, but we're looking for donations?
Yeah, right now, actually, last year, we, the the second month, it was actually to fundraise initial money. We start to work on the, on the, and we made videos and we made fundraising. And now I am in conversations with a foundation. To actually, if they can, uh, they are, on the idea perhaps to give us a loan, long-term loan, then we can. Uh, actually, uh, uh, work on that. And in November, we'll make the second campaign to continue fundraising for for this, yeah. But maybe I, what I should do is to forward to all of you when we do these things now, then you can. Be more familiar, and the newsletter, et cetera, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'll let Chloe get started. I'm I'm having a few slides at the end.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about existing land use. This is literally thinking about the, the dirt that covers the county, what each inch of it. Really acre is used for, and we're gonna go from big to small, just thinking about. What pieces have been developed and then what pieces are not developed, and then we'll go into. The seventeen different land use categories that we use. A little further in this presentation, so start with this really fun colorful map. This is showing developed land over time. Uh, anything that is green on here is wooded, vacant, agriculture, water. Park, recreation land, um, and every, all the other colors is any kind of development. So the yellowish or lighter yellow orange is. Land that developed prior to nineteen seventy, so something got built there, a house, a store, a road. Something, and then the darker orangey color is land that was developed between nineteen seventy and two thousand, so in that thirty year period. Uh, where else to be seen development? And then from two thousand to twenty twenty, which is a twenty year period, is the purple blotches. This map does not show redevelopment or reinvestment, so if something else was built in an area that was already developed. That's an important thing, that's not what we're looking at here, we're just looking at, is the land developed, is it not developed? And um, over what time period was it? So you can see kind of the patterns that we're seeing new development within the last twenty years, it's focused on the four twenty two corridor, as well as. Kind of up through the middle of the county, and then there's a whole area. Uh, over Hanover, around the tri-burrows, where you see, and then like north of Pottstown here too, so. And, you know, no surprises, that we're also seeing new development in the little pots. Blotches of land that were not previously developed towards the eastern part of the county. Um, okay, so then we're gonna go one category deeper and just look at. The developed land area in the county, is it residential or is it anything else? Alright, so this is just showing the same three time periods, nineteen seventy, two thousand, twenty twenty. And we're looking at, um, is it undeveloped, so that's this, in this. This is a, this yellowish bar is undeveloped, so that was sixty eight percent in nineteen seventy. Forty five percent in two thousand and forty percent in twenty twenty. Again, these are not, like, to do the time periods perfectly, we would have had to use nineteen ninety five in the middle. To make it twenty five years, we didn't have, our numbers for two thousand were way better, so we're just, this is thirty years and then twenty years, so. Um, but you're still seeing the trend over time. And then the developed land, residential is twenty percent of land area in nineteen seventy. Thirty six percent in two thousand and forty one percent in twenty twenty, and all other developed land that is not. Housing, um, goes from twelve percent to eighteen percent, and then in the last twenty years, it went from eighteen percent to nineteen percent, so. Um, that's not an enormous amount of new area being developed for non-residential uses over the past twenty years. Okay, now we're gonna go into the aforementioned seventeen categories of development. This is a lot to see, and I think some of the big picture takeaways are. Um. Yellow and this kind of light yellow color that you see are single-family detached housing. So all of the bright yellow and the pale yellow. Um, are single-family detached, which is still our largest land use category in the county. Right, so, um, we have a lot of other stuff here. We have a lot of single-family detached housing, something that you've heard before, but if you look just in terms of land area, that is still true. A lot of vacant agriculture, wooded, uh, recreational parkland. Still very present across the county, and um, you can notice the. Kind of blue chunks are in dust, uh, institutional uses, those colleges, universities. The public and private school system. Um, any government facilities are gonna be this blue, and they're really kind of scattered. Throughout, there's kind of big chunks, most places throughout the county. And that institutional category is a really large land use category. In the county. Okay, so. Uh, looking at the largest of those seventeen categories over time, so. Um. Just looking at single-family detached is the largest category. That's gone up a little bit over these, the same, oh no, these are not the same three time periods, we skipped nineteen seventy here, we're going just the last. Twenty years, so two thousand, twenty ten, twenty twenty, as we go into the smaller categories. Um, single-family detached, wooded, vacant agriculture, so notice these are going down, the wooded lands and the vacant and agricultural lands. And there's several things going up, housing, um, but one thing, recreation and parkland. Is going up a little bit also, so not all of it, but a little bit of this land is getting converted to public. Um, parkland. Um, else to notice here, you know, institutional. Um, else to notice here, you know, institutional is also increasing over time. No real surprises. Industrial is still is fairly flat. Um, and, you know, a couple of questions came up, we were looking at, well, what about? Like multifamily, we hear about all this new multifamily development. But multifamily is still in twenty twenty, only one point two percent of land area, right? So that's, you might have a tall building with a lot of apartments, but in this existing land use category, we're talking about land area. So, uh, multifamily is twenty two percent of dwelling units. But it those twenty two percent of our housing is on only one per two, one point two percent of our land area. So that's why it's lumped in with all other uses because it would be just so tiny down here, um, in terms of acreage. And that's it for me. Patty's gonna give the rest of this presentation, but I guess I could take. Questions just on the like use of land in the county, if anyone has something specific to that.
I I am very concerned to see that wooden area is going down. And it seems that this is a trend. And, uh. I am very concerned for many reasons, of course, for eh water, ecology, ecosystem. Uh, eh, the global warming, et cetera. And I think we have to think about how actually we can start to reverse that tendency.
It might be useful, and we've seen it in other presentations. The the change in land use over our comprehensive plan on where we said we wanted development. And where we sent, we wanted preservation. Because we get those numbers, how many units were in, um, an area that was designated conservation and open space? Sometimes we're losing a wooded area that was not considered. I don't know if that's a factor, oh, better not. But sometimes we're losing something that would be wooded, that was not in an area that we said we should be having conservation. I don't know if that's. A factor, Chloe, or not.
Um, I think both are true. You know, we are seeing some development out. And there's not, we don't see a lot of development in our conservation areas, thankfully. Um, and this is not the conservation area map, but you can see that. A lot of this area in the western part of the county is still not developed. Um, but I appreciate the comment. I think that even in our developed areas, you know, maybe this area that was developed in nineteen seventy. You know, I don't know, somewhere in Lower Marion, has a lot of tree cover and if it's redeveloped. That actually wouldn't even show up in here because this is talking about, um. An area that's designated as wooded, changing to a different land use designation. An area that's designated as like a single family detached housing development that has a lot of trees, wouldn't even be in here as wooded. Um.
But that's something, oh, it's it's provocative.
Yeah.
Because, and I've talked about it before, that the tree cover on our in our eastern communities is so important, yet it's vulnerable. You know, because some of it is aging out, some of it, there are issues about sidewalks and uh who maintains them and all that. What we wanna consider, I think, policy wise, is more greening in all communities, whether they're con conserve lands or not. You know, stormwater issues. So that's another something that's not necessarily reflected in what we're talking about here. But could be discussed as we develop policies.
Exactly.
As a tree protection canopy. And it's pretty strict. And, you know, we we as designers and engineers have to work around it if we want our plans to be. So it's something that you may want to get a hold of that.
One of the things that I noticed, Bob, interestingly, I think Lower Southford was one of the communities that had. A very strong tree ordinance while they were developing in the seventies, eighties and nineties. So there were trees being placed on private property when the community was being developed. Patty's shaking her head because so you realize it. Now we're looking at those properties twenty and thirty years later, and I'm able to do that, and they become. A tree cover that was never there because people had those when they bought their house. Those little trees were in there and now twenty five years later, they're big trees.
Now, one of the things that Anne or maybe Chloe mentioned at the beginning was not only do we have these uh trend reports, but there's also the hub. The where we're gonna have a whole list of background information that couldn't go into a report page report. And there'll be, oh, we're looking at dozens of maps are being produced by Bill McClay. And Rob, and they, um, one of the ones we talked about recently that we know we need to address is tree canopy. What the change in tree canopy is, and that would be in one of those, one of our subsections, which would be, um, sustainability. And, um, or environmental, environmental research, sorry. And so that is, but that was something we thought was important as well. And again, what what does that trend show us? And then how does that inform how we go ahead making?
I think a tree cover and tree canopy is really important to keep in mind. And there is definitely some amount of what Delsey was just saying, like a new development that may go from either wooded or agriculture to. Um, any other use. If the municipality has good ordinances in place, they're gonna be required to plant a bunch of trees and or preserve trees on site. So even though the land use designations will change from wooded to something else. There may still be a number of good canopy trees there or not, if they're not required to put them in or they get waived in the land development process. So, um, that is an important aspect of those.
But if you don't have an easement or restriction in the planning. Once they get dedication around of 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 the road rights away, then the neighbors start taking the trees down or liking. And it's all for not, so there has to be some teeth, other than just having, you know, dots on the plan.
And you're saying that Wimpane has those that protection in place as well?
Yeah, but they have the land development, right?
Yes, if you haven't existed. Well, you know, if it's part of the land.
Tree, and I don't want leaves in my gutters anymore. I could just take it down.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, in a multiple municipalities, I've been, you know, showing him that I sold on that discussion while I was taking your project through and their planning commission. And I've been in other communities that I know I've even struggled with every question. It's like. There's one thing you can get teeth when you're going through the land development process because you have, you have teeth. If it's in your saldo, you have the teeth. Or the municipality has teeth. The real question is, you know, how do you handle? Somebody and whether, and I'm not suggesting that it you should, because then it starts to get at the property rights. But how do you handle somebody buying a home and saying, you know what, I don't want tree, I don't want leaves in my tree, in my gutters. I'm gonna cut every tree to get out of my property and what's.
Right, it's a combination of things.
You if you codify it, you have the municipality and the community have teeth. If it's it's the. The contents that friction between the property right and and what's good for the overall community and that are good. Um, so my my convert, and and going back to this. Okay, I think something that's gonna have to be addressed in the in the county plan. And you're glued to it. It's 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 stark differences. Multifamily is one point two percent of the land use area used, but it's twenty two percent of the housing stock. In the, if, and that's, you know. Several community, a lot of communities, I should say, and I want, are struggling with how to accept density. On already. Zones, properties that are not. You know, open space or anything like that, but giving property owners that ability to stand upon using their properties. Which will improve the tech, which will expand the property tax base. Because, you know, in the next or the next twenty seven years. That's gonna be a big deal is how some of these communities are balancing their tax base. And the struggle between allowing for increased density, not necessarily having the infrastructure for that increased density. And but also trying to make sure that they can balance their budget and perform and and. Perform the the services that are needed in a community. And I think we're starting to see that all over the place and this struggle between. Do the people that live in the community and how that is, you you guys have had this. But, you know, I think that that to me is a stark, the the stark difference is that one percent can go up to twenty two percent of the housing stock. So, and I think that's gonna be something that's gonna have to be addressed in the county plan is. Some thing that you're about to say. I agree with you. Efficiency and not always.
Right, it's where you place a.
Not a good marketing tool if you're going into into attaching and wanting to develop the honor fifty units on the proposed.
You know, eh 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 elements of of culture and consciousness is it it comes key in the element. For example, here in Norristown, eh, the tree canopy is very poor. It is, you have a street thing which is completely empty. And but we just had, uh, two training sessions in Secantin with one hundred members of the community. About how to plant trees and what kind of tree. Except in the right place. And 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 those workshops were were nine hours training workshops for really knowing deep. And we were thinking, how how many people will be interested on this? We have one hundred and we just planted one hundred trees.
Was it tree handlers to uh has many agriculture? And you know, it's interesting, if you look and you go to Pottstown Borough and you look at the change in trees over the past thirty years. And my many of them were there because of the push of one person, Tom Hilton. Not necessarily the tree everybody wants, but he got trees all over that community. And what you need is a tra- a change in culture so that people understand the benefits of these trees. So that's, that's a whole nother.
They go to trees, put them everywhere.
Then then when you. Then when you think, for example, here, that in two years. Two hundred eh members of the Latino community has been trained in Secantin through this.
That's great.
It's an educational piece, no? And now we are challenging the school district. To to put that in the curriculum. Because, and I think we can influence the school districts, we can influence the things, then we have a change in the culture.
We saw that on our uh, on our Monco.
Yep.
On our Monco awards uh tour.
Yep.
That school district, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Steve, I just wanted, if you go back to slide there, I I just want to make sure that the board saw some big picture. Uh, information that I think the slide shows. Chloe, if you go back one more slide, actually, the map, the big map. Um, the the one that had by by time, the different shades of, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you look at that, you see a big footprint with the light orange, see a big footprint with the 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 middle orange. You don't see a big conglomeration footprint of that that dark purple, right? It's scattered all about. Now, if you go back a couple of slides to the the what you just had up on the screen there, Chloe, with the, um, the different uses, right? What I I I think this is telling us as a staff and you guys as a board as well is that. The the pace of the loss of wooded and agriculture and the pace of growth of land use accelerated a lot more since we in two thousand, twenty ten than it did. Things are slowing down in our county. They're still growing.
Right.
We're still developing, but not at the pace that we were. And I think that map and that table. Point to a big picture for all of us to keep in mind as we move along through the.
Well, and I think and I think that the key to that is being able to optimize. The already developed land. Instead of, instead of looking to undeveloped land, we're examining to be designated not to be developed. As being gobbled up. Um, I think that's the key. And once again, going back to my conversation about multifamily. That's the struggle that a lot of communities are dealing with, is, you know, how to do that and how to not. You know, be hard feathered when you suggested, so.
Yeah, right. So Matt's just pointing out this. There was a big drop in this vacant and agriculture category and then a smaller drop, and these are both ten year periods in the same year. Of a larger increase in the single family detached and then just a smaller increase over the last ten years. So the pace of development and the pace of the loss of the wooded and vacant agriculture is slower in the last ten years than it was in the previous decade.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's that's a good.
Belt areas already.
Yeah.
You're you're in our. It's building in the right place, the right arrangement and the way.
Okay, yeah, great. So, um, so I'm gonna shift the conversation a little bit, um, so. Um, you know, I'm sure, um, one of these presentations Chloe and or Anne talked about the fact that, um. There are, um, certain categories we have to always have in a comprehensive plan, is um, is um, set out for us in the municipality's planning code. Um, and but as for a county, there's a few more we have to do. And one of those is originally significant land uses. So a municipality doesn't have to technically necessarily look at that, but a county does. And so that is something that I want to talk about a little bit now. So when we did this big. Report that we decided not to do again this year, which Delsey was talking about, yeah. And on page thirty nine, we have that map. We have the regionally significant land uses map. And it's something that we obviously still want to update, um, and have, you know, show how that has changed in for the next comprehensive plan. Um, but I wanted to kind of maybe open up a conversation with this group, um, to first talk about, um, what it is. This is what the municipality's planning code say we have to do. So we have to have these, all of these particular things. They mention it. And then, um, the the next slide will be some of the things we also have anyway. But so I kind of wanted to have this conversation here to see if this is something, since we have to do this, what we have to think about a little bit though is what. Are what is our threshold for this sort of thing? Um, and one of the reasons we got into this conversation was. I think anecdotally, we've noticed that there's been a lot of. Um, proposals for, um, distribution warehousing. Not not a surprise, everybody knows, everybody's ordering from Amazon, everybody wants their stuff delivered tomorrow, and so it's gonna happen, excuse me?
And self storage.
And self storage, exactly, and self storage, because we're building smaller homes and nobody has any place. And there's no room in our small homes to do that anymore. No, I agree. So. So we started looking at that trend, and I'm not showing you the map because it really, it's a little hard to interpret right now. We're still trying to, um, look at that and still come up with those thresholds. We've, we started with, but we looked at storage facilities and we figured that's kind of where distribution warehousing could be. And we started, so we took, looked at that, that number. The problem is looking at that number is not as simple as some numbers. Um, the Board of Assessments, which is often our source for some of this in this data, doesn't categorize distribution warehousing as a separate use. So we have to take all of warehousing, all of manufacturing, and then start thinking about what is that threshold, where we go with that? And then next step would be that looking at some of those where we see it happening and then going down and looking at our other sources. Like, um, our, um, dynamics and our land development submissions, what really is distribution warehousing? To see if there's a trend in where that is or how that has changed over the last few years. But we we were talking about that threshold of two hundred thousand square feet, and I kind of wanted to have that discussion here as well, just because. Um, we went to two fifty, we started looking at that, then more recently we got some information from. People who are in the industry that maybe two hundred thousand is that threshold, the next threshold is half a million. We're only gonna have a handful of half a millions, um, in our county, but, um, so again, any thoughts on that idea? I just wanted to make sure that you, we have to do it. What we're thinking of trying to do is really make sure we're looking, we're looking at that trend of distribution warehousing. Is part of this significantly significantly regionally significant land use.
Are you still seeing like a? A push for those facilities in two thirty, two forty seven reviews?
Yep, still some.
Really?
Because I know like, you know, Amazon has pulled back considerably on building large warehouses.
Space, I got two million, right?
What's that?
Just last week, we saw two million and.
Right.
Lower cost for that?
And I did read a lot from Toronto. Amazon did pull back in certain places, they're pushing, you know, it's re inquire, they're pushing for that one on, um, the Southwest Federal Key. Although they haven't pushed on one of these Harden that they have built. So it's a little bit of a mix, but it seems like it's moving back and after there.
And I think it's also if there there are some like people who are just doing expectatively, like they're not, they're not connecting with Amazon, but they think, hey, I want that. Approval in place in case somebody comes knocking on my door.
Going towards Quaker Town, three oh nine, obviously not the county. Um, that they built and it doesn't look like it's occupied.
They do, Amazon, with someone?
No, no, I think it's just like, just like, Patty just said, on spec and.
On spec, right.
And I'm not sure that they have rented, it doesn't look like it's, that looks only one portion of it's being used, but I think that's the same thing.
And generally, these are, they need to be new buildings. Nobody wants to go.
Right, they have, they have, they have a certain way, they wanted to use it, has to circulate, right? They want a certain height storage as a.
Whereas they also want to, they want the roof structure differently because they want to, some of these facilities want to be able to put in. Um, green systems.
Oh, I thought maybe solar, but no.
And I guess there's also a push for. And I guess there's also a push for cold storage, that that's a real great demand as well, and not just the cold.
Cold storage.
Right, so. Um so again, I I'm just wanna say that I'm trying to just test this, test these waters. The other one that I think we wanted a little, we want to let you know and think about was. Large recreational facilities. Our last one didn't have parks on it, but we realized that that really is a a, there are a lot of parks we have in Montgomery County that are destinations. Um and so we set that at four hundred and fifty acres so that we could capture a couple of things like I um, I think that's. Port Washington State Park, we want to make sure we capture that along with some of the bigger ones in Green Lane. Again, Green Lane is a destination. If not from another state, certainly from other counties, and we know that from their data that they've talked about that. So um. And I just wanted to just, anything else here that you guys think about as we as we're looking at these, because the NPC puts that they want, they want us to do these, they don't give us thresholds. So we've done this, this is kind of where we so somewhat tested it. Um, but I just wanted to see if anybody in large residential developments, we haven't quite figured out like what that threshold is going to be that we would.
What, what? I'm just looking, um, I need a further clarification, then the large shopping centers, that we're seeing changes in them? How does that fit into all that? I'm talking about them repurposing, and I mean, I just saw where Willagrove Mall is putting residential in there, and I've always said that. Montgomery, Montgomery Mall should be made back into. A small town center where the headwaters of the Teddy Pond Creek are, and open it up and. I I don't know, I mean, wh- what will we? Will that section there talk about visioning for these large shopping centers that have changing uses possibly?
Will they still be categorized as a large shopping center?
Right, again, that's kind of what, that's kind of our dilemma, we still categorize them, right?
That it really doesn't fit that category anymore.
Yeah.
We have a different, uh, uh, of the ten issues.
Right. The change, the change. Right.
But, yeah, the 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 repurposing, we can. Certainly.
Right, okay. But this is a categorization exercise, correct?
Exactly.
You have to identify these regionally significantly uses, but you can determine. What makes it a large shopping center, five thousand square thousand square feet and above, but for that one, if if it doesn't have five hundred thousand square feet of retail in it anymore, is it a large shopping center?
Right, or is it, or, or, yes, right, exactly. Or do we look in an acreage, is it, how much acreage does it cover? Yeah, there was another way to look at it.
Bob, or I mean, I think you, I think you want to lower that threshold for large shopping.
Yeah, I think that's too much anymore.
Okay.
Maybe half that.
Half that size for large, okay, it's interesting. But that's exactly the kind of feedback we're looking, yeah, because we have to look at this and set all these thresholds for what's important, so um. Thank you for that.
I mean, you look at you. Dolly wrote out the Willagrove Mall, I don't look at any residential, I'm sure I'm looking at it, but. That being said, I mean, Willagrove Mall was built, it was like a vacuum. From the, from the commercial district. Around Abington.
Well, a lot of them were, yeah.
Suck the air out of all those commercial districts. Well, now there seems to be some. There seems to be a little bit more um optimism in those commercial areas because people are turning against the traditional interior mall. Setup and and taking and looking to take advantage of some of that changing. Um mentality and, you know, I'm not so sure that there's a department with thousands of square foot. Shopping center in Abington on Willagrove, I think there are a couple of different shopping centers that amount to five hundred square feet, but they're separate parcels.
Okay.
And it'd be interesting to see how. I think, yeah, I mean, I agree a lot, I think that numbers should be.
And and if they're putting residential in there, they need green space. You know, it's like the valley, like the Valley Forge, Village or whatever, so I mean, I think that's. You know, the, I think the centers and things of any.
Well, and another slide, we're gonna talk about um the use for um office parks. And that, and so in that, and actually that, after that conversation. Uh that might be one of the next things we look at is how do all these malls redevelop and what what's the trend there? Yeah.
You talked about the to be determined on large residential developments, I mean. You know, going back to our conversation about being more efficient with our land use. You know, I'm not so sure that that number doesn't want to be on the lower end, because if it's something that we're gonna. Or maybe even tiered, that there's. I don't want medium or large, but. You know, I'm thinking that if somebody is re capturing, say. Um. On a commercial corridor and they're recapturing or they're gonna redevelop a property or or assemble three or four properties on a port corridor. And put together a residential mixed-use development, they may only be looking at. Fifty units, sixty units, but it's gonna have a significant impact, and it's something that I think we should address. And it shouldn't just, you know, because I think the the times of. You know, large residential developments. If we stick with what our thoughts are, is not not developing, undeveloped, designated undeveloped land. That I think we want to stay away from. We, I think we want to address the stuff that's smaller.
The thing we have to be careful of is if we, if, again, this is what's in place now, so. If if before, if if we're not too not careful enough, we're just gonna have the land use plan, which is all, you know, everything, whatever's yellow is residential.
Significant is the key here, which isn't really fine, but it really should have an impact.
Hundred percent.
Spread wide, well, maybe that's just more of a general comment.
Right, I mean, that might be something that belongs more in our housing section, when we talk about different housing throughout the county and what's changing in the, in the picture of housing.
Let me go on to the next slide then. So this is also, this is on my list that was on this this map last time. And um I just kind of want to, again, sort of uh test this with this group about. Uh because these were ones that are not required in the NPC, but we felt still were worth putting on our our map last time. And um and you can see, uh. There were some conversations about car dealer clusters, I'm, I, Chloe and I had that conversation just yesterday, I'm like, I I think they are, but again, because there's a lot of places where they seem to. They seem to attract each other and you either go to Limerick or you go to Ridge Pike or you go to um, where's the other one, there's another one. Oh, there's um even White Marsh or Dublin has one, there's, there's a couple of different clusters there.
Do that in the steakhouse.
So, and then some unusual things, we have a prison, we have an incinerator, I mean, these are things that that they they are significant land use. It's not like they attract, it's not unlike sort of parks that brings people in. These are things that we just have to recognize are significant land use and 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 define our county. A bit.
I I I have something, a topic that brought up over the years, and I know where it fits, if it fits in any of these, is our golf courses. We have, I don't know how many we have now, but we at one point had seven some golf courses. And over the past twenty years, we've seen many of them change. And the, my feeling is there always should be underlying zoning for those golf courses so that when they flip. If they do flip, they flip in a way that is is um positive for the community and for the environment. I lived through North Gate being built on the Upper Perth Golf Course and got the call for could I have seven million dollars by Thursday? Because they had zoned it by density and they said it would never flip. So I don't know where that goes, Hannah, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, at this point. Yeah, no, that's good, I just, that's a good idea.
Well, golf courses now, just so you know. Cedar Brook. Waiting list is nine.
I know, yeah, it's changed again. It's it's changed again. No, I understand that. But, but, but. That's what they all say.
Oh, it'll change again.
Exactly, so uh this is something I've always thought was important.
Well, look, the fear, the fear is what happened, what what happened in Valley Forge.
Right.
I mean, they had.
Right, how many years, litigation?
They zoned everything around it as being something other than a golf course, and then. You know, they use the reverse, the reverse plot zoning, you know, argument and. And were, and in a sense, one, I mean, it never went to court, it was a settlement, but, you know. You can see that happening in other locations in in county where there's golf courses where they zone everything around it and say, well, it's just gonna stay that way. Forty's? I know.
Are you serious?
Is that a?
Is that a physical thing, though?
No, 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 it's, no.
What is you, of course? It's where Einstein, that was a.
Oh, that's right, it was, yeah, I forgot that, yeah.
So just, it's a blinking light, it's been a blinking light in my vision for many, many years, and I just don't know how we address it, but I think it is something that could be encouraged.
You know, to. I agree, something that we might want to show on here, yeah.
I see incinerator and power generating station and waste transfer, but do we have like? Something to offset that, like solar panel farm or? Uh, recycling facility?
Well, the county recycling facility that Drew's been pushing for, but I don't, we can't do that as an existing land use yet, but now, I know. Um, so again, these are here, I I if we, I don't know, do we have a huge solar farm in Montgomery County that we need?
All right.
Yeah, sure, but that would be something that would be, could be regionally significant.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so, again, I, we need to do that update, and one of the reasons, um again, when you see this, again, we're trying to make sure that it's readable. We're not even sure it'll go on one map anymore because of some of the other things we're adding, but um I did appreciate, we do appreciate that conversation.
And if you think of something later that you say, hey, oh, this should be on there, it's a regionally significant land use, just get in touch with us, we'd love to have your input.
And so I'm I'm meant to like mention this is, this is my second cameo appearance today, because I'm part of this group, I will say that. Of any good cameo person, you really rely on your team to do most of the work and you just get up in front, and that's kind of what I'm doing today. Um I was involved in a lot of the conversations, but I will say that a lot of the heavy lifting for this work was not me. It was Chloe and Anne and another team, including Mike Nark, which I want to give a call out to, because he spent a lot of time on this next one that I want to. Point out, was something we did have a conversation about. So we even had, we had had conversations um internally. And there had been conversations that were even brought to us by some outside people about what was happening with our office parks. And industrial parks, that that turnover, we see it happening in Port Washington. We see it happening in a lot of different places, and what was the trend of what that looked like? And and what did that trend mean? What would that mean for the future? So. Um. We, Mike, took a look at these office parks in these particular areas as. Partly because they also show up on our COPEM map, our 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 county map, as areas that are office parks. Or industrial parks, and so we took an analysis and looked at those to see. Um, last time, what was the land use and then what it is this time? And.
Proposal.
Proposal, sorry, proposal. So, again. The former land use by percentage, and this was the thing, again, this was not the easiest thing to do because. This is always done by numbers of proposals, not by acreage. But we felt that it wasn't going to give us a real understanding of what was happening in that park if it didn't get down to that point where we looked at acreage. So, um, you know, the first step was looking at what the proposals were and then. Delving deeper to find out what that meant by for acres in that office in total. So. If we look at all of this, I think it's four hundred and four, let me see how many, and not, you see the total acreage, let me see here again. Get what the total acreage is, and I don't see the total, yes, total acres, four hundred and four acres. We take those and we add up all those acres. Former land use, well, you can see where there it is, we had commercial, industrial, professional office, a little bit of unknown. It's always that, and then what we can sign is considered uh and developed, so it could have been. Um, just parts that were maybe ground fields or just bacon at the time, but if we took all of those, those office parks that I just showed you. And and added them up, that's what we had, we had that percentage.
Particular time pathway, or what what do you mean by two?
This was, um, yeah, twenty ten.
Twenty ten? That was it?
Twenty ten, yeah.
So twenty ten is the left hand side, twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty, now, as of today, twenty twenty-three is the right hand side.
That's not land use on the right hand side, it's any proposals.
Proposal, so again, so let me just, yeah, let me keep going, so the first is a land use, but if you take all those land uses and those acres. And then you relook at what we have now for proposals as of twenty twenty-three. It's not like some, it's not in place yet, or it could be in place, it's all about how this has been redeveloped and is proposed to be redeveloped, so again.
It's existing now and proposed.
And supposed, okay.
So.
Yeah, and so that you can see what we had, that we've now added. Um, recreation a little bit, but we've added um three residential groups. Single family attached, detached, and multifamily. And that was the trend we kind of wanted to see and capture what was happening with that and what that then meant for. Um land use going forward, what that meant as a trend, um what that, how we want to then talk about that in our comprehensive plan for re, for. These office parks, what does that mean about um industry and other things going on in our, in our county? Well, when you also look at, there's a report out that there's still not enough housing, that I'm not sure that that this is a bad thing. It's just a thing, and so we need to think about how, what is it that we now need to think about in our comprehensive plan and going forward? Uh, knowing that this is how redevelopment is happening, and this is how municipalities are are supporting that as well. There are a lot of municipalities that have done like text amendments and other things in some of their industrial zones to allow for like multifamily housing as well. Um is that's another use you can do along with industry, so. And then this is like the net change, so it gives you an idea, um if fully constructed, this is what would go up, you know, multifamily, um. Goes up ninety seven point three. Um, by acres, commercial goes up ninety five acres, residential goes up fifty eight, or residential, single family detached goes up fifty. Um, institutional goes up forty thirty-three. Residential, single family attached goes up twelve, and institutional, which also already goes up three, recreation goes up. Industrial goes down forty. So we're losing forty acres and a professional office goes down eighty-seven. So it's just, again, a trend to think about, to see about what's happening in the county, um and then how that would inform how we go forward. Okay, I'm gonna give back to, unless you have any, any thoughts about this? Okay.
I have a lot of thoughts, but not.
Anyway. Okay, just the last slide, just to mention, uh mostly, we already talked about this. We're focused now on completing these. Um, four-page documents like the three that you have in front of you, there'll be a set of ten when we're done. Um, we're focusing on getting this map and resource hub up so that. If they're easy to access and there's additional maps and data that people can dive into if they want to go beyond what's in that four-page document. Um, we want to continue public outreach, we do still have the survey available in English and Spanish and Korean. Uh, at moncopa.org slash monco twenty fifty. If you haven't taken the survey, if you have anyone you can spread it to, please do. Um, we have plans to set up another public outreach website for additional input. Uh, working on establishing, working towards establishing an advisory committee. We also have some ideas about doing some visioning workshops with staff prior to doing them with um the advisory committee, so that's all. Lots more to come and future visioning exercises that would be. Uh, done with, with you guys, I'm sure we'll come back, talk to you about that in the future.
Why not, why not Latin? I, you know, it's all the time we're studying, our history, why Latin is so important.
You can translate it for us, Steve.
Chloe, why don't we have a QR code for our, on all these instead of a?
That's a good point, we actually have a QR code. Um, I mean, on, in the online version of these, that'll be clickable, so if you're on a computer, but if you have a paper copy having the QR code.
It's just a good idea, you know.
Sure, great.
It's pretty common.
Yeah. I mean, there, we have a postcard, I can bring some in for you guys. We have a postcard that has a QR code to our website that has the survey on it, so. Um, you know, we do have those already printed.
It's not so hard to put it in and it just.
Yeah, no, that's.
Oh, you have this brochure, oh, can I just QR code it and not get it rather than right?
Yeah, sure. That's easy to do.
A postcard to that, yeah. Dan used to be our QR guru, he every, he put on everything and I.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Chloe.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Any assistance to contract fee termination? How on earth, hey, don't hurt, ah, good morning, how are you? It's going well.
Um, so, the, we're in the process now of beginning to uh give proposals to the communities that contracts expire this year to renew for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have fourteen renewals coming up, eleven communities and four, three of the regions. Um, so as we begin those proposals, we need to adjust the annual rate, uh which we do every year. Um, so, basically, this is the planner day rate, this is uh what we charge communities. Um, the planner day is essentially a blended rate, uh includes uh all of our salaries, all of our overhead, fringe, expenses, basically everything that goes into. Um, serving a community through the Community Planning Assistance Program, we defined in those costs. Uh, and so when we renew a contract, um we basically have a level of service for each community, our standard level of service is two and a half planner days per month. Plus twelve night meetings. So that's our standard contract for basically a standard um, one plan, one project, one deliverable. Uh, at a time and then attending their planning commission meetings. Uh, so our goal for that is to then recover fifty percent of our costs uh through that, through that revenue, through that contract. Uh, so basically, the contracts are subsidized by fifty percent. Uh, looking back to last year, and we do this every year, sort of in anticipation or preparation of the the fee adjustment, is how did we do last year? So in twenty twenty-two, looked at all of our costs, we know what our revenue was through the planning assistance contracts, and we recovered about fifty-two percent of our costs. A little over, you know, half of our costs were recovered, uh and so that's right within that 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 goal of fifty percent. Um, we've been basically at fifty-one, fifty-two percent uh for the last six years. Um, the only two years that were. Um, the only two years that were slight deviations from that were COVID, uh, when some of our services and the costs were, were down that year because communities were adjusting to in-person meetings and other things. Uh, and then when we had some staffing changes in twenty eighteen, that means some slight adjustments as well. But essentially the program's been very successful, right at our goal of that, that fifty percent. Uh, so moving into twenty twenty-three, we did go from thirty-six, uh, to thirty-five communities, uh, in our contracts. Um, but the revenue did go up a little bit. We have the, for the existing contracts, we have an escalation in there about one percent a year. Uh, and then some of the contracts that did renew going into twenty twenty-three increased some of their services. So our revenue did go up about one percent for twenty twenty-three over twenty twenty-two. Um, but our costs did go up significantly. Um, we've had about over two, uh, raises last year, twenty twenty-two. We increased about seven percent of our salaries. Um, and so that's, that's the big number that we're looking at and trying to recover, uh, through the fee adjustment. Uh, I did an analysis of where we stand mid-year in twenty twenty-three and we're right at fifty percent. Uh, as I extrapolate through the rest of the year, basically doubling what we were at the end of June. Um, but there are some, some differences. I expect our costs to go up in the second half of the year. Uh, we were actually down two planners going into July. We hired two planners, uh, so we are now fully staffed for the second half of the year. Um, so in addition to that fully staffed, we also have some transition that will occur over that time. Um, Chloe is going to be moving to county planning, but a lot of her time for the second half of the year will still be in community planning as she transitions, uh, those communities over to the new planners. Um, so in that analysis, I estimated we drop a little bit below fifty percent, uh, at the end of the year. We'll see where we end up. We'll do this analysis again next year, but it's possible we go below that fifty percent, which I think is just another justification for taking a little bit more, uh, of, of an aggressive, uh, thought process for our increase. We've only been doing one percent a year for the last seven or eight years, uh, and we know inflation has been going up. Um, we've been getting end of year cost adjustments each of those years. So we've been right at the fifty percent even with those slight adjustments, but uh, again, factoring in the big seven percent last year, we're in the middle of a compensation study right now and potentially we'll be getting some mid-year adjustments from that. And of course, at the end of the year, we're, we're hoping there will be a cost of living because inflation continues to affect everybody. Um, so we worked with, uh, uh, basically a subcommittee of the board, uh, Bob, Nicole and Stephen, uh, to kind of go through this analysis. I presented them the numbers. Uh, and we decided to, to look at a five percent increase, um, which would get us, again, looking and estimating our, our twenty twenty-three numbers uh, would get us back up to, you know, a, a fifty-one, fifty-two percent moving forward. Um, again, this is a lot more art than science, uh, because there's so much that goes into what our costs are. The, the planner day rate is just one piece of that. Um, obviously depends and varies year to year by community. Um, how much work they get done. Sometimes they have to go off on, on other tangents. They have a lot of big land developments that come in, whatever major project we're working on, might have to go on hold for a few months. Um, who's working on those projects? It's a big comprehensive plan and we have a lot of team members on that. Graphics, GIS, uh, if it's a smaller study, just some ordinance updates that that planner can do alone. So year to year, the, the costs vary based on, on what projects are getting done. Um, and that planner day rate is just a small piece of that. Um, but it is an important piece and, and particularly for the contact, the contracts that we negotiate, we want to make sure that we're starting off on, on what we think is going to be a number that recoups us that fifty percent. Just in terms of impact, um, the standard contract this year of two and a half planner days, twelve night meetings pays about thirteen thousand dollars per year to the county, uh, for the services. Um, with the five percent adjustment and a new fee rate, uh, for the contracts negotiating for a twenty twenty-four start, um, they'll be paying about thirteen thousand six hundred. Um, so it's about a six hundred dollar increase, uh, on what they're paying now. Again, over two payments, you know, three hundred dollars per, per payment. Um, I don't think, and based on a lot of the communities that I've talked to over the years. Again, we're such an incredible bargain and a value for what, what they pay. Um, and their replacement costs, several municipalities have said would probably be three to four, five times of what they pay us. Uh, so I don't anticipate municipalities reacting significantly to that increase. Um, I think they understand and probably expect an increase of some sort from all of their, their professional services. Um, and I imagine ours are probably even lower than, than some of the others that they're getting as well. So again, working with the committee and Scott on that, um, the five percent. But again, we're going to reassess this next year, uh, and if, you know, it seems like with those, the impact to those raises and maybe what we get this year. If it's still that enough, you know, we have the opportunity next year to adjust, uh, even more, uh, or if we're, gets us, gets us back to that fifty percent. Uh, we can go back to, to a one, two percent, uh, increase. Um, so I think that's, that's the goal again, and is, uh, looking at the fifty percent. And it's interesting, you know, just as I said before, about how we've only been doing it one percent, but we know inflation and our two percent raises each year um, some kind of factor in. So I think the fact that each of the contracts has sort of a one percent escalation built in, the planner day rate will be seven fifty for the first year, seven fifty-eight for year two, seven sixty-six for year three. Um, that that does go a long way into making sure that we're, we're keeping up with, with increased costs. And then we get the one-third of all the contracts, sort of get that bigger bump, uh, depending on what the increase is, uh, for that particular year. So again, you have the resolution in front of you. You have the, the presentation summary, uh, which tries to provide the justification. You see the, the current numbers. Um, so we're looking at currently, uh, seven fourteen for year one, seven twenty-one for year two, seven twenty-eight for year three. Uh, with an increase then, the seven fifty is five percent higher than the, the first year rate previously of seven fourteen. And then seven fifty-eight is one percent over seven fifty, seven sixty-six, one percent over seven fifty-eight. And then we do have the, the short-term contract rate, which is always one percent over year three, uh, which would be seven seventy-four. Uh, and that would be, I think mostly like the, these school districts, uh, and any other short-term contracts that we would have. Again, we try to push everybody into the three-year, uh, because we really do push the idea that planning is a process and we're not just there to do deliverables. We're there to work through, uh, the whole process with the community and be there. Um, you know, at the beginning, middle and end, and help with implementation as well. So I don't know if any, the committee members, Scott, have anything to add to that discussion?
Let me, let me read resolutions.
Sure.
Your MCPC Resolution twenty-three-nine, point three of resolution of Montgomery County Planning Commission, it's updating the fee schedule. The Community Planning Assistance Program, as listed as, and in front of you in, in the agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve resolutions? Move in second, if I can. Move in second, or any comments or questions before we do it?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, um, in addition from the subcommittee discussion was obviously this is going to take time to implement with the renewal. So that was part of the discussion on the five percent as well, is that recognizing that the costs are going to increase because of the, you know, salary increases. But we're only going to be recouping these additional fees as the new contracts, uh, as, as the contracts are renewed and come online. So it is going to take a while until everybody's under that new umbrella. So that factored into, I think, the percentage discussion as well.
Yeah, only fourteen of the, of the thirty-five, thirty-nine with the regions, um, will actually be affected by these new rates. Uh, but the old ones do have the, the escalation built in. Um, so they'll be one percent higher than they were this year. And then the new ones, you know, they'll be about, actually, if you look at the, the built-in, you know, increases that were in the other contracts, they're going to be paying about a six to seven percent increase over what they paid this year.
What, what happens if inflation goes to fifteen percent? No, I mean, they, if, if, if the county has to, in order to keep the staff that they have, they're going to have to increase their salary. So what happens then? We're, we're a loss leader, then?
Well, I, I'll always, I'll leave those policy decisions to the commissioners and to this board, but if we, if we maintain the fifty percent, then we would just have to, to increase the, the planner day rate. Um, again, we do this analysis every year and we'll see where we stand and what adjustments are necessary. Um, but again, I, I think from a competitive standpoint, I would assume if everybody's facing that inflation rate, then, then, you know, the, the private sector and other people that do this sort of work will also be increasing their rates. We won't be out of the norm, uh, in terms of whatever adjustments we'd have to make.
Okay. I think the idea is that the, the fluidity of the issue is something we're going to have to discuss next year, although and see where, where we're going with it, especially as Nicole said. You know, referred around terms, it's only a third of the community coming up and actually more than a third, but it's really a third, a third and a third over the next three years. And so we'll have to see how that affects the overall income.
I, I, I know that, uh, you're now fully staffed. And we're looking at slowly increasing the revenues coming in because of this. Will we be in the position, now, of course, you're afraid, maybe you lose some, but maybe then we would be able to take those that were interested, because I've heard that there were some communities interested, but we had to turn them away because we didn't have the capacity.
We're still not over, we're not under, for us, we don't have room with our current, we're fully staffed, but that meets our full work program now. Um, that may loosen up, you know, we may lose, you know, a contract may drop at the beginning of the year. Um, we'll certainly be looking for that, but I, I would say this doesn't open the floodgates for, you know, taking on a whole bunch of new communities either.
Maybe there's a different way to, they open the floodgates, maybe, you know. I mean, what we want, we want them to come. I mean, flooding, flooding is a not a good thing, you know, uh, achieving more, um, you know, contracts with communities.
Control them.
Whatever. But I'm just saying, I, I hate to be turning down communities that are looking for our, our, our system.
Yeah, no, I think that we agree. I mean, I, I hate to say the word and I hate to hear the word. I, I, that, that no is not something that comes out of my mouth easily. Um, and, but there's, it really got to the point of, I was, the, the value of my staff and, and, and their mental health and, and all that was.
I'm not telling you should, you should burden them further, but I'm just saying, we as your board need to understand that if our goal is to get as many people doing good planning and we think that the Montgomery County Planning Commission can provide that in the most effective way for lots of reasons, bringing them into the county. You know, conversation more, more energetically, we need to think about that.
And I think as, as soon as we feel we're able to do that, um, and it might depend on what the proposal is, you know, maybe a comprehensive plan, maybe too big of a lift. Somebody just wants a, a walkability study, and maybe there's some, some different levels of services that we, we can provide. Um, but we're going to be seeing who renews at the end of this year. Uh, and also I think too, you know, there's a little bit of a learning curve with the newer planners and, and what their efficiencies and capacities are. So, you know, every year that goes by, even with the same staff, we can get some marginal increases in our capacity. So we keep an eye on that and, and anybody that we feel that we can take, um, we'll do it.
You should try saying, no, it's liberating.
So, you know, as, as an end user of the product, uh, I can't speak highly enough, uh, about.
Don't tell people, because we have.
Uh, I, uh, the, the benefit to the community that the planning commission provides to do all that we do, uh, is really, really, uh, quite a bargain. Um, what's nice about it is that as our applications for land development have decreased, uh, our ability to become flexible about projects for you guys to work on for us has increased. So we've been able to take advantage of the time and look at other opportunities for different studies and things like that, you know, uh, that they've been great with. You know, Patty was just here the other, at the office the other day with her team showing some plans. Um, but in a purely selfish note, am I one of the fourteen this year? I'm, I'm, I'm just starting my budget conversation.
You are not.
Figure it out.
I'm not, okay. So it's next year.
You're ready for fifty percent. Yeah, that's like, oh, true.
How does that match occur? Now, how, how do you decide, uh, I guess mutually, um, what work the county is going to do when the, the, uh, applications go down?
So in our case, um, I just reached out to Eric, uh, about some opportunities that we're looking at doing. And is the county in a position to be able to help us with that, uh, as we move forward? And can we fit that within the agreed-upon schedule of time, um, and, um, hours for, uh, for what they do.
And then what do you do, Eric? Play a kid in a cor.
I say yes. And he always said, yes. He always said, yeah, of course. Of our floodgates.
Oh, look at that.
Planner days a month plus twelve meetings.
Yes. So what we do is, uh, we develop a contract. In addition to sort of developing that level of service is we develop some structured assistance. And so we will lay out a work plan for, are we going to do this walkability study? We're going to do this downtown study. We're going to raise some grants for you. And we'll have, for most communities, we'll have a list of three to four things that we plan to do over the course of that contract. So again, depending as the, the availability, capacity of the community, how many two forty-seven reviews they're doing at the planning commission. When there's an opportunity, we'll start with that list. But that, you know, that's just sort of the guide. And if, if something else comes up, we can, we can work on something else. So as I said, the standard contract is really about one deliverable. So if, and what that deliverable is, doesn't have to be, you know, we're not that dynamic. It doesn't have to be on the structured assistance. If some opportunities come up that the municipality wants to take advantage of, we'll work on that. But it's essentially one product at a time. So if they're not working on something now and they say, I would like to work on this, it's an obvious yes. Yes, absolutely. That's in the contract. We can do that.
Does the municipality ever say, we'd like more time from the county? Like, you know, instead of two and a half days and twelve meetings a, a year, we'd like a little more like in the middle of a contract because something's come up?
Occasionally, and we have done some contract adjustments, um, amendments over the course of a contract. Typically in, in that situation, because there's so many of our communities have done three-year contracts every three years for the last thirty years. Um, depending on how much it goes over, um, what their current level of service is, we just build that into the contract renewal. Um, we'll, we'll take a little bit of maybe a loss in one year, but then when that contract renews, we'll recoup that and build in that work plan for the next, the next three years. Um, it's just easier for everybody to, to deal with it in that sense. And, and again, these are about relationships and, and not necessarily.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we're screwing the, the planning commission at the time that we're asking them to spend with us. Yes, we're really meeting.
Uh, we do that analysis every year for every community.
And, and, and that's a good point. So when I do that fifty percent recovery rate, it's obviously the total of all of the communities together. Um, and, and again, that number varies year to year by community based on what they're doing. So, you know, a community could be thirty-one year and ninety the next year. But after three years, it usually is very close to that fifty percent. Um, so, but we'll look at that going into the next contract. In the renewals, in the renewals, I'll see where we've been over the last few years. And if you've been way over, we'll have a discussion.
Those may be on that list.
It'll be in the paper tomorrow.
I need to check sometimes, extra.
The headline will be. Next line will be.
Yes.
I think the commission screwed by Lance.
So I do have a question though. The Act two forty-seven review thing. Is the planner day charged to review that? Or are we charged against that two forty-seven figure? Is that a separate fee that we don't pay?
That's a separate fee. So when we do, just real quick, we do our analysis. We back out the costs of our two forty-seven review because we're already getting paid for that separately.
Sure, okay.
So we only back out seventy-five percent of the cost because part of the selling, uh, of the contract is that you are going to get a slightly enhanced review, maybe a little bit more in-depth redesign. Right, or something else. So we do account for maybe twenty-five percent of those costs through the contract. But essentially the bulk of that is paid for through the two forty-seven and taken out of.
I'm looking for a two forty-seven reason, review that's generated like a zoning change or something like that.
If it's ours.
If it's ours, is that, do they get charged for that? They don't get charged for that?
No.
Community assistance contract, right?
No, nobody does.
Nobody does, right.
So if some municipality doesn't have a community assistance contract, uh, you know, puts a two forty-seven review in for something that's generated by that municipality, they don't, they don't pay?
I believe it's zero. Boss, Scott, with the best.
Yeah.
And we, we, we set a project in certain townships, we fill out the.
Yeah, that's a different, I'm talking about stuff that's generated from the actual township.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, municipal zoning amendment is a zero fee.
Yeah. John, Jonathan, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, I was interested in that.
The only last thing that John brings up a good point is, you know, obviously this is a community planning program. The community planners are, are the, you know, the bulk of that. Um, but one of the big selling points we have for all of our contracts is that you're not just getting your planner from the community planning section, you're getting the agency. So you are getting Patty's design section and you are getting the transportation section or helping with our active transportation plans. You're getting the county, you're getting the, the GIS, you're getting Drew's environmental expertise. So all of that really goes into a, a big part of what sells the program is that you're, you're getting the agency, not just a single planner to come to your meetings.
Yeah, five people.
Also, oh, now, at, Merksen, add up the.
No, but I think it's, it's a, it's a huge.
Five people. Yeah, I just, I was.
So we have resolution, uh, oh, we already did it. So anybody, any other questions? All of us in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you to Nicole, Stephen and Bob from the subcommittee. We really dived into the numbers. Extra hard this year, very valuable to us. And we'll do it again next year.
Don't confuse. The next thing.
Eric, can you, can North Wales? Can you give with the statement and I afterwards about Lance Hill?
After Dr. Lee.
To not come up in our conversations. So next we're going to move on to, uh, Lance, uh, excuse me. Wait a minute. The cancellation.
North Wales Community Planning Update. North Wales Community Planning Updates.
Yeah, how about you?
I'm just giving you something related to the comp plan and there's way more over there if you want to take some. Sorry, Tim, I'm. Why isn't it on this? It is on this, it's on the back of the postcard.
No, 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 why isn't it on this?
Uh, it will be, okay, thanks to your good suggestion.
Okay. Oh, I mean, you already thought of it.
Yeah, we have done lots of other things.
We think all players, you know.
I've been watching the update that I can now go home and not worry that I'm going to run into the convict.
I'll pop right to you. All right, uh, good morning, everybody, I'm Tim Panachi, community planner here, and I'm just going to quickly go through the North Wales Borough contract renewal.
Can you remind me of the working? Kimbrough, the relief picture?
I tried to break, break the. Put his arm up like that.
Yeah, that's it, he's, he's been struggling with it.
All right, so, uh, North Wales Borough is just. Point five nine square miles, so it's very small, it's surrounded entirely by Upper Gwynedd Township. It's in the Northern area, uh, three quarters of the borough is residential in use. Uh, most of that, uh, fifty-eight percent or one hundred and seventy acres is made up of single-family detached homes. Another fourteen percent or forty-one acres is made up of twins and duplexes, so it is a fairly substantial section of the borough. Um, just eleven percent is made up of commercial, mixed-use office and industrial uses. Um, and the remainder is kind of split between institutional, utility and open space. With the North Wales Elementary School and the North Wales Train Station taking up a large bit of that institutional and utility land here and here. The twenty twenty, uh, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two contracts, um, included a lot. It started with a walkability audit and report, which was my first project here with MCPC. Um, we also pursued a DCNR C two, P two grant during the ARPA supplemental funding round last fall. Uh, there was a TOD targeted amendment to the zoning, which was actually prepared by Maggie, the previous planner, that I kind of got over the finish line with her help. Um, and then we just finished last night, got approval of a full zoning ordinance rewrite.
Nice, very nice.
So the walkability audit and report, which I believe I went over in more detail in the past here. Um, basically we reviewed, analyzed and scored every single block, every sidewalk, every intersection for pedestrian infrastructure. That included both the physical infrastructure, so the conditions of the sidewalk, if there was a curb ramp, that sort of thing, but also context-based standards. So how close is this block or intersection to the train station, to the elementary school, the business district, for example? Uh, we also looked at focus areas, including the railroad crossings, um, Main Street down here, uh, the two Montgomery Ave. Um, the train station area and then the elementary school, which actually did have a Safe Rats to School grant a couple of years ago, so it was in pretty good shape. But we were just kind of, um, you know, looking back and analyzing it to see, you know, how it holds up. Um, we also spent a lot of time looking at implementation, so how would this actually get done? Um, and primarily that will come in the form of grant applications, which they've already started pursuing. They created a gateway, um, from the township going towards Upper Gwynedd's, um, Parkside Place Park on Centure Street. Um, kind of in their industrial district, so that received a Monco grant recently, um, and then they added. Um, a couple, um, RRFBs along Walnut Street, because that's where most of their traffic comes in to the borough.
That North End's moving.
Yes, it is, yeah, and they, they have the elementary school over here, um, and then the, I believe it's the middle school is up here. Um, next we have the Ninth Street Park Grant, so this was kind of, um, like Eric was saying, we kind of pivot when these things come up. So we were in the middle of the zoning, then we took a couple of months off so that I could write this grant. Um, so they have this, I think it's actually their largest park by acreage. Um, but it's very underutilized because this kind of meandering path here, uh, is pea gravel and it's become eroded over time, kind of the edging is, you know, it's gone. Everything's eroded, so you can't navigate a stroller, a wheelchair, that sort of thing in this park, um, so that was their main concern. The design section, um, Yang Di, when she was here briefly, prepared this plan to go along with the grant application. Um, and the whole idea here is accessibility, so for one, like I said, the trail was eroded, so they want to do a permeable surface and they're planning to use perky pave. So that kind of rubberized material, um, made of recycled tires for the entire length of the trail. Um, adding in an ADA parking space down here, adding signage, um, a natural, naturalized meadow here. Um, and then the curb ramps here as well, because right at pretty much both sides, um, it's not really mountable for a wheelchair or anything like that. Um, let's see, the pathway will be five feet wide, it'll be an ADA compliant surface. Um, oh, and something very important, all elementary school students in the borough have to walk to school, they don't get bused. And a lot of people live in kind of the northwest section of the borough, so they'll take this to walk to school between here and then their other large park. Um, so it is very important for, you know, children as well as just the general community as a park. It's, you know, it's a transportation corridor as well as a park. The TOD district amendments, like I said, Maggie Dobbs had prepared them before I started. Um, politically, it just kind of wasn't the right time when that was done, they were still reeling from a potential townhome application for the, that TOD area. Um, so they weren't ready to take action on it, basically. Um, it was important to the Borough Council at the time, at the end of twenty twenty-one, though, there was, you know, potential, um. You know, I guess there was momentum, so to speak, with the TOD, didn't end up coming to fruition just yet, but we are hopeful that that'll get done with the, uh, the full rezoning. Um, all that is this.
How many members are on the council, did you mention that at the beginning?
Their planning commission is five, I think.
But then, so then Borough Council?
Yeah.
I, I believe.
I think it's larger.
Really?
Yeah. Twelve. I think it might be nine, there's, there's a lot.
Might be seven.
I'll say seven, I think, I'm counting on, on what I saw last night. So this, the TOD amendments really focused on the permitted mix of uses within the district, uh, parking lot design and building design. Um, this has kind of been evolving over time, the TOD was, you know, early two thousand, it was created, saw some minor improvements. And this was the big kind of full rescale and kind of a teaser for the rest of the zoning rewrite. Oh, and that was adopted in September of twenty twenty-one. Uh, the. No, at that time, no, um, that, that was, that went very smoothly and everybody was happy because everybody wants to see it, you know, redeveloped, it's kind of just laid, uh, you know, fallow. The full zoning rewrite was a much more intensive process, all said, it probably took, uh, two full years to get over the finish line. Um, like I said, there was a couple of months working on the grant application, other little things have come up as well, canceled meetings. Um, but the first major task here was taking the zoning map and kind of starting from scratch. Um, we used the future land use map from the recent comp plan as the guide for that and as you can see, it's pretty much a one for one. Um, you know, where single-family districts are, where the core business district is, industrial, all that sort of thing. Um, but the biggest concern was that there were three single-family detached districts, they all had varying, you know, dimensional standards. It didn't really make sense because it's an older borough and development was, you know, it wasn't suburban. The way that these three districts were written, there was a very big, you know, very big lots, very big deep setbacks and that kind of carried through all of them to some extent. Um, so we thought that was silly for point five nine square miles and consolidated all of those, one single-family district here. Um, built in some context-based standards, so you're looking at your block for the lot size and the front setbacks, rather than some kind of arbitrary, yeah. Um, some arbitrary number, um, pulled. Uh, so you, they, they were very concerned about neighborhood preservation in their comp plan, so that's kind of where that idea was, so. Um, the two-family district was really just this kind of orangey area here on the future land use map. And we ended up being able to expand it over here to the east and then up here, kind of northeast of the Corbin or the TOD area. Um, and by doing that, we eliminated a hundred-plus non-conforming uses. There's tons of twins, tons of, uh, duplexes that were in a single-family district, they were probably two-hundred-year-old homes, so, uh, did really make sense. Uh, the TOD was expanded by just about, I think it was seven or nine parcels down here as recommended by the comp plan. And then we consolidated an office residential district into a commercial business district. Because the office residential district was a huge hurdle for developers, um, we actually had several, um, small business owners come to public hearings throughout this process to say, hey. Been trying to move in here for months, but I won't pay twelve hundred dollars for the zoning here and board. So, now as of today, they should be good to go. Oh, and then lastly, the institutional overlay district was just reimagined, it was, um, it just, it, the way it was set up, it didn't quite make sense, it was a large area. The adaptive reuse principles didn't quite add up to something that was executable, um, and now it's more targeted, so it's actually looking at specific buildings that, um, were de- determined to be architecturally important. The major revision of the ordinance, um, we didn't start from scratch, we kept most of the framework. But, you know, we kind of did have to start from scratch in some cases, so we made a use regulations chapter, so we have every use that's allowable in the borough listed. Each one has a definition, standards, um, sometimes design standards, sometimes landscaping requirements, that sort of thing. Um, the parking requirements, we just threw everything out, started from scratch, looked at the ITE comparable communities, kind of best practices across the board. Um, and luckily Mike Narkovich had a spreadsheet started, so I could just kind of look at our neighbors and figure it out from there. Um, and Matt Popeck was instrumental in that, he basically, I basically sent him what I wanted, he said, how about you go lower? So that worked out great for me. Um, and then just every chapter really saw a revision, we did a totally new, um, wireless telecommunications chapter, added in renewable energies on, under the use regulations. Um, expanded the administration section, so Borough Council has a better idea of what kind of factors they should be checking off. Um, as well as the planning commission and the zoning hearing board. And here's just a couple excerpts, um, from the comp plan, specific things we tried to meet. So meet the housing needs of current and future residents by preserving housing stock and allowing for appropriate infill development. That's that context-based standards where, if it's a block of small lots with small singles, maybe there is an oversized lot where you could get in one more home or something like that.
Did they address ADUs?
They did, yep, that's a very good point, um, we did get ADUs permitted. Oh, absolutely, and they felt the same way and they, they're seeing some, so in every district or every residential district, ADUs will be allowed. Um, it is a special exception and the own, there are design standards, that sort of thing, but the biggest limitation is in a single-family district. Um, it does have to be owner occupied, either in the primary or the secondary dwelling unit. So that, that's a minor thing, but a, a kind of a major shift, um, in talking to Anne, sometimes you are required to have the owner live in the, the, you know, I guess the proper, the primary home. But this is, you know, would allow you to age out, go into your ADU and let your kids move in or something like that.
How about chickens?
Chickens, they do allow chickens, I believe they allow up to three on most lots and up to six on larger lots. Yeah, I don't, I've never seen one though. There was a pig for a while. The, um, the biggest, maybe the biggest reach was the outreach at the end. Um, in April, we posted the draft zoning map, the draft ordinance, uh, some outreach docs to the website. Um, and then by May, we also had a full story map that by the end saw between five hundred, five hundred and six hundred views, so that was pretty good for such a small community. Um, the May fourth meeting presented a summary to Borough Council and the Planning Commission. Uh, we probably had thirty residents come to that meeting. At the June meeting, we discussed targeted edits based on that input. And then in August, we had, I'd say over a hundred people, we stopped counting after about seventy-five. Um, we, you know, listened to everybody for two hours and then for an hour, I, you know, I said how we could address each of those concerns. So by the time we got to the, uh, August eighth meeting. Um, at Borough Council, they were able to vote on that amended ordinance and then last night, the public hearing was one minute. Because every, all those questions and concerns were nailed down. So we had two, three-hour planning commission meetings so that Borough Council could have a one-minute, one-minute public hearing.
Smarts, good.
Yeah, worked great, um.
Made the newspaper every time.
Oh, yeah.
For the paper all the time.
Yeah, we were, they were, uh, yeah, it got better over time, the first article was a bit of a hit job. But Upper Gwynedd had the affordable housing thing going on, so there, we had some of them come over as well and complain about affordable housing, um. As like saying it's a bad thing, but that's besides the point. Um, each, so yeah, I guess that's everything with that and here's just a little example from the story map. This was a slider with the old and new zoning map, so you could see kind of, you know, where, where everything lays. Um, and then going forward, we already started on a review of the Act one sixty-seven historic district. It covers about a third of the borough and they want to expand it a little bit more, there was kind of a couple of blocks that, you know, fell off throughout the process in nineteen ninety-nine when they initially did this. Um, so now they want to go back and add those, um, and we're looking, we, we already started working with PHMC and we're looking potentially at CLG grants. Because they are certified by local government, um, so there is kind of that, you know, tucked away, kind of hidden money that a lot of folks don't know about because they're not CLGs. Um, the Ninth Street Park Grant Administration will of course continue. Um, and then complaint implementation will continue, so they already, uh, looked at permit parking studies, they have that around the train station. Obviously with COVID, that's less of an issue, there's less people parking at the Sepulveda, so there's a lot less people parking in the neighborhoods. Um, street tree inventory has come up consistently, um, I know that's something that we, we did with Norristown in the past. Uh, saldo revisions and rewrites are, uh, that's probably going to be necessary, I think there's aldo's about forty pages. Um, and then ongoing administration, um, and implementation of the walkability audit, so continuing to look at grant, grants to, to go out and get. This contract started at the beginning of the year, it goes through the end of twenty twenty-five, it is three years, two and a half planner days and twelve night meetings, like Eric said, is the standard. Um, it'll cost a total of around seventy-eight thousand and just under thirty-nine thousand is the municipality's share. And that is. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Speaking of a community that gets their money's worth and.
Oh, yeah.
Some great projects and then Tim's done a great job, you know, he came in halfway through that walkability study and, and, uh, he started. Hit the ground running, got that done, got all those other grant work done, got this earning completely rewritten. He's done a great job there as, as he's, I then worked on his other communities as well, he's putting it all in Pottstown and Upper Perk and, uh, West Norrington right now too, so. Um, we, we keep the planners working hard and the communities happy.
That's for sure, thanks, Eric.
Next up is, uh, Simon with the annual inventories, I think Simon's online.
Actually, we're, uh, Anne is, Simon is, uh, ill, um, I think he is watching, but we're going to have Anne do the.
Feel better, son.
Okay.
Did Karina's have coffee?
Yeah, I did.
We're running a little bit behind your aim, so we are trying to.
Uh, Scott already told me that I need to keep this very brief.
Yeah. It's something that we've done every year, so it should be familiar to everybody, so.
So.
Excellent, I know we have eleven thirty hard stop for a lot of.
I was going to try to practice saying no, but I'm going to say yes, I'll be fast. Here we go. Uh, so these are the annual inventory updates. And to some of them, you've already gotten this information on another forum because you've heard our residential and non-residential construction reports, uh, earlier this year. But we do a little targeted deep dive and look at shopping centers, age restricted housing, thank you, Robert. Uh, multifamily and attached housing and business parks, so let's see what trends are happening here in County, um, warehouses, we're going to, we're going to talk about warehouses, so. Um, and thank you to the various planners who helped us with photos for this presentation, this is Matt Popeck's photo of Stone Brook in Marion, it's a. Single-family attached community with two hundred and seventy-one units, um. We're seeing continued trend of development near transportation corridors. We have twenty-seven new developments that were either started construction or completed in twenty twenty-two. Um, and then that's an increase of just shy of fourteen hundred units from last year's twenty twenty-one update. Uh, we're seeing, you know, talked a little bit already about the, the, um, the trend of denser multifamily housing being. Uh, a hard pill to swallow in some places, but we're still seeing that as the trend. Um, and a continued emphasis on infill opportunities. A map with eleven dots on it, so I'm just going to keep going. Uh, age restricted housing, uh, this is a picture that Karina took, it's freedom. Of the Regency at Waterside and Horsham, it's a mix of attached and detached units, uh, a total of just about five hundred new units. Uh, in age restricted housing, um, you know, we, we talk about this county getting older, uh, and people need places to downsize. Uh, in age restricted housing, um, you know, we, we talked about this county getting older, uh, and people need places to downsize to. Um, age restricted housing is, is one of those possibilities. We've got just over twenty thousand age restricted units. Across one hundred twenty-eight developments. Uh, most of those are multifamily. We had four new developments in twenty twenty-two. Those are the Del Webb Community in Hackney Township. The three hundred twenty-six units, the Regency at Waterside, as I just mentioned, in Horsham. Uh, Madison Estates in Upper Dublin with two hundred fifty units and Pops Grove Hunt in Upper Pops Grove Township. We've also got other developments that are just, you know, adding these phases here and there, so. Um, for a while, I honestly thought that age restricted housing was just gonna kind of figure out, but. Seems like a pretty strong year for new age restricted units. Uh, and I don't know with us, uh, so I'm just gonna keep going. Shopping centers, um, we already talked today about malls and, um. Others struggling to uh, hold on to their retail tenants because we've got fancy new places like the Village of Valley Forge. Uh, this is Troy's picture, so thank you, Troy. Um, this, this has proven to be a very popular and successful development, um. But that being said, we only had a little teeny tiny addition to the shopping center inventory for last year. Um, a gas station at Costco. Um, no real other infill development took place at our shopping centers. I don't think we're gonna see a new mall. Shopping center. Um, for a long time to come. In fact, we deleted the, the Walmart that we were talking about. For the one that became the Amazon Distribution Center, since it's not a shopping center anymore. Uh, maybe that will change, but we took it off the inventory for the time being. Um, so again, our shopping centers have, have to be clustered along our transportation corridors, so. Exactly. And last but not least, business parks, uh, this is, this is a picture we already had, so I will just thank our office for having a resource of photos. This is for Washington Office Park. Uh, this is our seventh year of tracking business park developments in the county. We have over forty-seven million square feet in our fifty-two business parks. Um, the three additions from twenty twenty-two are all new warehouse space, I believe, um. Two warehouses at the Providence Business Center in Oaks and then. A wa- a sizable warehouse addition of the Line Lexington Industrial Park. Um, we're not, I mean, this is only a small slice of the warehouse stuff that we were talking about earlier because we're only looking at what took place in our. Granted business parks, um, and we, we looked at the, the shift in what's being proposed in our business parks anyway, so I guess that's. I guess a continued conversation for another day. Um, I don't know, not with that this time, just with uh, pink parcels, so. Um, that's it. See, thanks. Uh, in summary, uh, sorry, I forgot I had the slides since I'm only pretending to be Simon today. Um, new developments across our inventories, twenty-seven multifamily and attached developments for age restricted developments. Um, one tiny shopping center addition, three business park additions. Um, yeah.
Any questions for Anne?
Thank you. Feel better soon, Simon.
All right, Scott.
All right. Um. Okay, uh, first I want to welcome our newest staff member, David Penlon. He's in the community planning section, Eric.
Yeah, so we, we hired, uh, came up as a community planner too. Uh, he'll be working with Ambler and Jenkentown and he'll be transitioning into Sauterden and also helping with the Indian Valley uh, comprehensive plan update. Um, he got his bachelor's degree from the University of North Texas in uh, urban policy and planning. Went on to the University of Texas at Arlington. He got his master's degree in city and then regional planning and uh. Texas's loss is our gain, uh, so uh, we're happy to have him. Do I say anything?
Yeah, it's hard to get here.
Uh, yeah, I mean, um, it was a combination of, you know, seeing what was available at the time and. A combination of uh, the unique experience that I think as a planner, it's not typical that you see, um, at least in Texas where I'm from. Where you see such a coordination between the county governments and the municipalities within it. Um, and so that unique opportunity alone, I think is what drew me most to the position and uh, also love the Philly area, so. Notice you said the Philly area, not the Philly sports team. I'm not, luckily I'm not.
Welcome with open arms.
We hired nothing but a telegraphist.
Um, and yeah, I'm, I'm a bit more of a college sports kind of guy, so, uh, cool.
Music played, we play the uh.
Yeah. I play saxophone, yeah, uh, a little bit of piano. I actually started my music. Degree when I went to the University of North Texas, but we also had a great uh, policy, urban policy program. Uh, so definitely my interest there, but yeah, it's more of a new musician, something. Welcome, welcome, thank you. Nice to meet you all.
All right, um.
Keep Matt Popeck ranting of asking a whole bunch of questions.
Good, uh, moving on, uh, today and my reason or apologies if you've seen me on my phone during this meeting, uh. We are uh, filming for a award that the county is receiving from the Pennsylvania Environmental Council. Uh, to acknowledge the county as a government innovator of sustainability. And that will be presented to us in November as part of that at their annual dinner. As part of that, there'll be a video, a five-minute video, um, professionally produced. Uh, to highlight uh, why we're being awarded. So today we have a number of people being interviewed, including our own Dulce Flaherty. Uh, and uh, appreciate that, uh, well, some commissioners and other staff and myself. So I've been orchestrating that today and we'll be getting shots over the next two days uh, across the county, uh, various sites. Um, the, we on, on the planning education side of things, I did want to highlight, we have a busy, a couple of months ahead of us. And just want to make sure you're all aware of some of the things going on there. The upcoming ones are in your events uh, notification. But Planning Smarter, the Course of Community Planning is a series of three sessions, September fourteenth, twenty-first and twenty-eighth. Uh, Matt, you're teaching, who else? Steve stands on as well. Um, so we'll be uh, getting that out.
Not well, but.
Teaching good, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, on October thirtieth, a little, a little further out, uh, Planning Smarter, our big event this year for supporting municipal land stewardship. Uh, Bill Hartman and Eric Gerald are, are heading that, but other staff are also just being, plus a panel. Uh, will be involved, um, and that is currently scheduled for Lower Frederick, uh, or Quansville, depending on the venue lockdown, but. Uh, that'll be a four to six P M event on October thirtieth. Anne Leva Gruberger will be on the digital realm with a webinar in, in partnership with the Penn State Extension. Where she'll be talking about accessory dwelling units, uh, the challenges and benefits of, and so, uh, zoning issues with those. And then, uh. Oh, it's in Minnesota, okay, correct. Uh, and the uh, APA in a state conference is on October fifteenth through seventeenth in Lovely Scranton, Pennsylvania. Uh, we have six presentations the staff are participating in. Uh, just quick to note, acknowledge Chloe's uh, put in strategic strategies for managing density. Good, the bad, and the falsely reassuring. Uh, that's a fast, fun, fervent presentation, uh, and then.
Is that the whole title? Bad fun bourbon?
No, that just means that it's a, a quick fifteen minutes.
They're new. Uh, Claire and Chloe again are doing a full presentation on From Idea to Reality, A Tool for Planning and Codifying Active Transportation. Uh, Anne is doing Changing Hearts and Minds and How to Talk About Housing Affordability, along with the Kaylee Silver from our Housing Department. The County Planning Agency Review Letter, What is This Thing? That is a Matt and Patty special. As you can see, they like us to be. Bill and Patty Elkus of DDRPC uh, are doing the unique evolution of open space preservation programs in three southeastern Pennsylvania counties. Uh, and that will highlight return on environment studies as well. And then finally, the sixth one, the new planner, Finding Your Way in the Field, Matt Edmunds and a, a colleague from Berks County. Uh, are putting uh, that. Uh, okay. And we'll also be sending a few other staff of to that conferences or as much as we ask. Uh, update on the SRPRA, so we put her passenger rail authority. Uh, the decision for the federal corridor ID program, which kind of opens the gates to the funding and, and, and putting this project into the next phase. Uh, was delayed. It's now scheduled for November announcement. Um, there are ninety applicants or corridors across the country. Uh, so we still feel confident, but also um, it will be significant if we do get into that. Uh, however, we do have federal funding and a uh, alternative routes analysis, uh, study will be initiated and RFP is going out soon. So that project is still uh, definitely moving ahead and in November will bring. Uh, hopefully some exciting news. Next month, our, our monthly board meeting will be held in person. It's usually on Zoom, but it will be in Pottstown. We'll be highlighting uh, some of the officials there and how they're excited about uh, the prospect.
So we've been away board meeting.
This, this is the SRPRA. But within, I'm on, I'm myself and Ken Lawrence, right? Uh. Circuit Trails on the Tip, I just want to give you a little background piece. Um, we've been working with DDRPC and the other counties in the region. On, and the Circuit Trails Coalition to really uh. Accelerate our ability to fund circuit trails and complete the regional network. Um, this is a immense challenge, but we've got really good buy-in and commitment from, from the multiple counties. Um, there's still discussion on how to get it, but getting each county to put a significant trail on the tip could be a huge step in. Uh, advancing uh, completion of the network, you know, and our priorities, so. Uh, we've been a leader in that and uh, Matt and Bill especially have, uh, helped. And so uh, we're gonna continue that and I just want to, we're aware that's one of the efforts behind the scenes that, that happens. Uh, a, a few event highlights, it's a long list this month. We see we're coming back in the summer, um, in a, in a strong way. Uh, the Western Orange Township is having an open house in their comprehensive plan, uh, big run by our staff on, uh, September eighteenth. On September twenty-third, here in Norristown, I believe that's a Saturday, the uh, Arts Hill Open House. Uh, will be taking place, or Arts on the Hills, it's called. Uh, a whole day of events throughout the downtown Norristown and on, on DeKalb. Uh, we're going to be focused on the Trail Junction Center, which is at DeKalb and Lafayette, and that space will be utilized as, as I think, you know, we're, we're. Working on renovating that space for the future and have new uses, but it will be used for this event outdoors for uh, uh, some concert. Uh, some music replay, uh, as well as art activities on the site. It's really an opportunity to break that site in and again, get more awareness that it's something that's we're working on and getting a feedback into design on that. Uh, on September twenty-fifth, the G, uh, Greater Valley Forge TMA is hosting its annual advocates breakfast. Uh, early seven thirty in the morning, uh, the county will be receiving the diamond award. Highest level uh, for our commitment and uh, activities on transportation demand management. Uh, and we'll, staff will be attending, uh, which Lawrence is on the board and also could play tense. The uh, Ridge Pike Improvement Project Section B has a groundbreaking ceremony scheduled for October fourth at one P M. Uh, the actual location, uh.
To be determined.
To be determined. Um, as, as always, you know, it's, it's a, a press event, but any board members are welcome. They're available to come out and would like to participate. Um, uh, we'll provide details as that, as a.
You won't get an invitation.
Correct. Uh, and then I just want to highlight, um, uh, something that some of our planners are excited about, um, mulling it over myself. A National Loop Without Driving is October second through eight, and this is a, you know, an effort to, to, a challenge really for, for those, uh. Who, who uh, love and embrace their car to see, you know, what would it be like to be without and, and find alternatives if that possible. Um, so I, I, I think that's an actually an interesting uh, challenge, so. Uh, we definitely have some people who are, who are planning to do that. Look at my schedule and see, see, maybe myself, I'm curious about it. That is uh, October second through eight.
It'll take you that long and get to work.
We'll be making one day this week.
Them closer than others. All right, um. And then I think the last, so the last thing I want to make sure I updated you on is next month's board meeting. Uh, this will, this will be in a way meeting Dulce. Um, however, the away part of it is uh, almost figurative. It's in Norristown. Um, but we will not be here in this room. Uh, we'll be sending out the, the full details and agenda, but I'm gonna give you a preview right now. As usual, as we've done, we did it last year in the Upper Perkyomen, if you recall. But as usual, we kind of have to expand the start and end times a little bit to fit everything in, uh, and appreciate those who can accommodate. Uh, we'll be meeting at Flux Space, which is a, a private company, uh, off of, uh. Uh, further west off of Maine.
It's, it's off Budwood below Main Street.
Yeah, you probably haven't seen it before, but it's a really neat operation that's going on there and I'll, I'll, I'll save the details uh. For later, but they, they're doing some cool things. And we will meet there, we'll board a bus. Uh, just a quick rundown of some of the sites we'll see and, and hear about, we'll ha- uh, we plan to have uh, Crandall and Jane from Norristown, maybe a few others. Uh, also participate and join us. Uh, Lafayette Street Project, the Art Street Connector, the Trail Junction Center will be our first stop and, and topics. Chester Valleys Trail Extension, uh, which goes off into Bridgeport and Upper Marion. Uh, then we'll come back to the Elmwood Park Zoo and hear about their expansion plans and what's going up in that corner. Uh, in that area of Norristown, the Norristown State Hospital, which is a huge redevelopment opportunity right now and RFP out. Uh, that, that, that the municipality is really, is heading up. Uh, but their acquisition of that land from the state is driving that and then we'll be talking about what uh, future visions are for that. Parts of that property. The Norristown Farm Park also up there and has some interesting things going on that we want to hear about, especially uh, uh. Yeah, the Green Center and workforce uh, board involvement. And then the final uh, hour, uh, we, we have a, a mix of sites around the municipality to look at redevelopment and what's happening in the borough. We almost. If we want to come up with creative titles, I think there's something in here about, you know, the hidden Norristown. There's a lot, a lot going on that doesn't always rise to the, the headlines or the, or. Or that people hear about and we want to make sure our board's aware that our, you know, staff's aware, we don't have a planning contract with Norristown, but that doesn't mean. We, we want to keep those partnerships and, and dialogues uh, struggling going. Uh, then we'll come back to Flux Space. Uh, ideally around twelve fifteen to twelve thirty and we will conduct a board meeting. It'll be a brief one. Um, you know, short as half an hour, uh, with lunch served as well there, so. Uh, final wrap-up time, uh, ideally one o'clock. Could push a little. Any questions on that? So we'll give, we'll share details, um, logistics.
Where's that development, um, or what, Farm Park or the state hospital?
Uh, where is it?
No, I mean, I guess where is it in the process?
Uh, well, the, so the ownership, I think has been transferred. There, there was an RFP with the RDA is, is uh, part of that.
I believe the land, the RDA owns the land.
Yeah, yeah, the RDA owns the land. Not all of the land, mind you, it's a portion.
Yeah, uh, not the whole state hospital, Norristown has engaged services, uh. Uh, they have to do a consultant and help them with land use.
Uh, that is.
Any other, uh, any other business comments, questions before we turn? Okay, great. I really appreciate everybody, uh, getting into, we're being in person and I think it was helpful to have everybody in the room at the same time. So I mean, and look forward to seeing everybody next month. Thank you.
Thank you.